All right, folks. Being it's that seven o'clock hour, I'd like to call the regular meeting of council Monday, July 14th back into session. Looking for approval of the agenda?
Motion.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. It is public participation time, so folks, if there's any members of the public that would like to make a comment to council, now is your time. Mr. Giuliani, name an address up at the microphone, please.
What are all these bits and pieces here? Not sure if they belong to someone else, but I might move them. Nigel Giuliani, 3431 Coggar Terrace. Four times in two weeks, you guys might think I'm planning to run for council. Just got a two or three minutes worth of comments, and the subject is on sewage treatment. I was unable to attend the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Meeting last week. However, staff were good enough to get me a copy of the report. And having read it through, I'd like to make a couple of comments and just maybe a suggestion or two. First of all, I agree that it's a good idea for Colwood to look at another option because of the appears that the CRD project is stalled. So I'm supportive of looking at another option. And aligned with that comment, I note in the report that it indicates that Colwood, in addition to some other municipalities, are talking about another option. It is not clear as to what that option is, but it maybe could be a single option where all those municipalities would participate in that. And my comment is around that. Wouldn't it make sense to pause in what Colwood is doing by pursuing their own option and let that process run its course and see if there are opportunities there that may make more sense than Colwood going it on its own? I can think of one immediate advantage to that, and that would be that Colwood would not have to be spending either $350,000 or $1 million of prep work upfront. So why not wait until it can be determined whether or not there is not, shall we say, a multiple municipality solution rather than quickly going down this path? And quite frankly, there's no hurry, because according to the report, it indicates that if Colwood are to go down this path, it could be completed in 2017. And again, from the report, it indicates that it doesn't have to be done until 2020. No, 2020, sorry. So there's a three-year cushion right there. So there's no hurry. I could understand if there was a need to pursue it immediately. There's another reason why I think it maybe makes sense to pause. One of the things that I noticed in the report, that other than some summertime golf course irrigation, the report has makes no mention as to how treated wastewater would be discharged. So for seven or eight months of the year, where does it go? And maybe an analogy might be helpful. That's like designing and building a house with a kitchen and a washroom. So maybe you might want to think of pausing the process and continue the discussions actively with those other municipalities. And they were mentioned in the report, so I think you all know who they may be. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Any other members of our public? And so that we can get on with our agenda, I'll do one final call for any public speaking members. And seeing none, we'll move on then, folks. Mayor's message. I do have a couple of items. One is the Rock the Shores event that happened at West Shore Parks and Rec this weekend was a resounding success from all parties in. I've heard that very little issue on site, that they were overall generally very pleased the way that went off. We had good cooperation with the weather, good cooperation with the patrons attending, and good music to be had, so kudos to all of those. There is a note that came from West Shore Parks and Rec specifically thanking the City of Colwood for their support to fire, Colwood Fire bylaw and West Shore RMP for their assistance in making a truly remarkable event. So kudos, everybody. And Chief Smith, pass that along to yours, folks, as well. The other one is, in the sewage treatment conversation, there is another opportunity for the public to come and hear what's available and what's out there, what kinds of processes the city and the bigger multi-municipality solutions are looking at. It is the SeaShelt process, so we have members of the SeaShelt team coming to Colwood. They'll be at Royal Roads University at the Muse tomorrow night at 5:30 with the presentation starting at 6:00. So it is a free event. Everybody's welcome to come down and listen and see what the presentation will bring forward. Aside from that, any other members of council with something? Last meeting for our summer break, so we will be reconvening in August after this date. Looking then to move on with our agenda, adoption of the regular minute, our regular meeting of council June 23rd, special meeting of council June 26th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Received minutes for Planning and Land Use Committee Special Meeting, June 17th, Protective Services Committee Meeting, June 11th, Transportation and Public Infrastructure, May 5th.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We have a few pieces of correspondence requiring council direction. First is a letter from the United Steelworkers, District 3, Western Provinces and Territories. In this letter, they're asking for city councils to pass resolutions expressing their support for proactive action to protect workers. Though this is not an area of municipal responsibility, we recognize you as community leaders, and this is a community issue. Council, how do you see?
I would move to receive.
Second.
Counselor Day, comment?
Just, I'd like to recommend that we pass a resolution similar to the one presented to enforce the laws that have already been written and advocate for their use to protect
So we have two motions up here.
No, I'm just saying that we can receive it, but we might also want to do something, so I just throw that out there.
Any support for doing something? Move.
I'll second.
Conversation around? Yes, no? Okay? Call the question then to follow along the sample resolution that was provided to us to enforce Westray Amendment to Canada's Criminal Code as a result of the Westray Mine Disaster in Nova Scotia 20 years ago. Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next piece of correspondence is a letter from Rhona Martin, President of the Union of British Columbia Municipalities Community Works Fund for our Community Works Fund Agreement 2014 for the gas tax program. And this one. I understand we've got the paperwork, and this one requires signatures, a resolution from council to resolve that the mayor and corporate officer should sign both copies and return to UBCM along with certified council resolution. This is in fact for our gas tax funding, which for the first of two community works funds payments for 2014 in the amount of $348,274.70. Counselor Day.
I would move that we resolve to enter into agreement with UBCM and that the mayor and the corporate officer be authorized to sign.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. A letter from Mayor Sherri Green, City of Prince George, in regards to submission for the 2014 UBCM conference, a resolution, our resources to support sexually exploited children and youth. There is a resolution that is here before us, saying, "Resources to support sexually exploited children and youth, whereas the issue of sexual exploitation of children and youth is an increasing problem in communities throughout the province, and whereas the provincial government has ceased funding towards services that support communities to develop prevention, education, enforcement, and intervention strategies to address the sexual exploitation of children and youth. Therefore, be it resolved that the UBCM requests the province to identify the issue of sexual exploitation of children and youth as a priority and reinstate long-term dedicated funding for communities throughout the province to develop and maintain services for sexually exploited children and youth." Counselor Day.
Thank you. I would move that we support this resolution by creating a Colwood resolution of the same wording, so exactly as presented here, because certainly we are very aware at the family court and Youth Justice Committee that the services that are out there for youth are drying up rapidly. There have been tremendous cutbacks, and there is a great number of youth who are not finding themselves able to access services. For example, youth mental health in the West Shore is currently looking at a 12-month wait time just to be seen by an intake worker. So that is certainly a very big issue for us, and we're very aware of the issue being province-wide, because it is reductions in provincial services. It's definitely that downloading.
Hoover in a second.
Second.
All those in, any?
I have a question.
Yep. Counselor.
I guess I'm just confused. Sorry. Thank you. I'm just confused from a standpoint of, this is coming to UBCM for us to vote on, but the resolution itself requests that the provincial government to identify the issue of sexual exploitation and reinstate this, and us doing this through UBCM. So I guess I'm trying to understand, what are, what are we passing as a motion? We're passing as a motion that we're going to take this to UBCM, or that it's already before there? I guess that's what I'm confused at. I'm not, I'm not, not supportive of it, but I don't really understand why we're passing a motion on it.
So the bottom, the council of City of Prince George encourages you to pass a similar resolution and support this resolution at UBCM.
Yeah, but what is our motion? I guess that's my question. I, I understand that this is the language, but the language speaks to the fact that we support it at UBCM. It says, "Therefore, be it resolved that UBCM requests the provincial government to identify the issue." Well, it's already going to UBCM, so why are we passing a similar issue if it's already going there?
Counselor.
That's my only point to that.
I guess the only reason is to add weight. The more communities that pass the same wording for the same resolution, then when this resolution comes forward at UBCM, they can identify those communities that have supported this, so it gives more weight to the resolution coming forward.
This raises the profile of it in the process.
No, it just seems pointless to me.
Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old Business, Under Transportation, Public Infrastructure Committee, Report, CAO, dam on private property, 740 Bexhill Road, update.
At this time, new information has come to light. Staff need a little bit of time, so I'm asking council to consider deferring this until the August meeting.
And I would like to suggest to council that we do support this deferral. Very productive meetings did occur this afternoon, and it looks like staff are going to be able to come up with a workable solution. And I think we owe it to them to provide them some time to do so and bring recommendations back to council.
I'll second it.
And I was part of that meeting, and yes, I think we've got a way to work with this, so I'm happy to, to wait until August to have conversation on this further. With that said, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Finance and Admin, Item 6.2.1, St. John Baptist Church, Proposed Additional Lighting. Are we with Counselor Day?
Yes. As you recall, we had considered at our June 11th meeting, information provided by the Heritage Commission regarding proposed replacement lighting for St. John the Baptist Church, and a quote that was supplied from only one company. And a couple of points to make for you. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Martin for bringing the purchasing policy to mind at the time. The Heritage Commission is not accustomed to spending large amounts of money, so it was not something we were familiar with. And I have confirmed that all committees should be following the purchasing policy, so that was a good catch. The Commission is fairly new in its current bylaw, and we have not presented a budget yet that would be approved. So normally, with an approved budget having been provided, items that are in that approved budget would not require to come to council, but of course, any items that were not in an approved budget would. And so this item has come to council appropriately, and we would have liked to have been able to provide three quotes. However, by today's date, close of today, we were only able to obtain one other quote other than the original quote that was provided. It was from a local Colwood company and was in fact for slightly more, sorry, I'm on my email. It was for $11,500 plus GST. And the quote that we had from Emery Electric was for $10,935 plus GST. So, and I also wanted to let you know that we've also been able to secure a donation of materials and labor for the masonry works that need to be done to support those posts. So I'm hoping that council will be willing to move this forward and award the contract to Emery Electric to supply and install two City of Colwood-style cyclone poles in dark green with LED light sources located in place of the existing pole on the corner and in place of the existing pole at the entrance to the churchyard, and a third pole to replace the existing pole adjacent to the driveway, for a total cost of $10,935 plus GST. And I would so move.
Second.
Conversation? Counselor Collington?
Thank you. Very happy to support. I was just curious to know why dark green rather than the sort of the Colwood blue?
I believe it's just the members of the St. John and Heritage Church's preference to be in keeping with the trim on the church.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. 6.3, Planning and Land Use Committee, Report, CAO, approving officer appointment in agreement.
The city's appointed approving officer. The city's approved appointing Officer Mr. Alan Hellenby, who is here this evening, will be retiring at the end of July. In order to transition him into the role of the city's appointed approving officer, council must appoint Mr. Hellenby as the city's approving officer this evening, so that there be no lapse. Part of this, negotiations would need to occur between Mr. Hellenby and myself with financial remuneration as approved in the five-year financial plan. I'm asking council this evening that they consider that Mr. Alan Hellenby be appointed as approving officer for the City of Colwood effective August 1st, 2014, and that Mr. Alan Hellenby be authorized to perform the full duties of the approving officer position, and that Mr. Alan Hellenby be indemnified against any and all claims for damages arising out of the performance of his duties as approving officer, and in addition, the city shall pay legal costs incurred in a court proceeding arising out of any such claim, and that the chief administrative officer be approved or be authorized to negotiate and sign an approving officer agreement between the City of Colwood and Mr. Alan Hellenby.
Second. Or I'll move it, actually, sorry. You're now an elected official, just so you know.
Thank you.
Second.
Conversation, discussion by council?
Just a question. Is there a timeframe on this, or is it continuous? What's the, for five? Okay.
I've got it from 2014 through 18.
Okay. The financial implications, okay. You're going to stick around that long?
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you through the chair. I'm also very happy to support this. My question is through to staff, what's the transition plan after 2018? Because I'm not sure if Mr. Hellenby's going to want to continue for another five-year term. So do we have any succession plans in place?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's not that it just goes from 2014 to 2018, it's just that's what our five-year financial plan has already included in the budget planning. So as each five-year budget comes forward, the, this is just one of the items that comes
Thank you through the chair. Then I have a follow-up question is, how long are we appointing Mr. Heldenbe before then?
My understanding is it's an open-ended appointment, but he could terminate at any time, or the city, part of the agreement will have a termination clause or a cancellation clause, and that's what we build into the notification requirements. If he wanted to terminate the contract, or if the city wanted to terminate the contract, it's built into the agreement.
Okay, then I'll go back to my first question. Do we have a succession plan in place in the event that does happen?
We do have two alternate approving officers already appointed, and that's the city engineer and the acting director of planning. Both are alternate approving officers right now.
Okay, thank you. And then we, safe to assume that we do have the capacity in-house to take that work over in the event that Mr. Hellenby decides that he doesn't want to do it anymore?
I'd just like to add that we are having discussions, we have had discussions for some time about the future of our internal process for development services and whether there's going to need to be changes to the program based on an increase in demand for those services. That's something we're going to be looking towards within this timeframe. We're also taking some schooling right now. Our deputy engineer took the approving officers course through the LGMA program last year, and I plan to do the same in 2015.
Thank you. That's precisely what I was looking for.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just when I was reading through the agenda, it has occurred to me that I was wondering if we are the first to have a dedicated approving officer? Is that something where Colwood is new in that regard, or is that something other municipalities are also doing?
This is not new. Many municipalities have a dedicated approving officer, whether contractual or in-house. Am I misunderstanding the question?
Sorry, I probably meant whether they do it contractually.
Oh, no, both options exist. In smaller municipalities where you don't have the resources, they're usually contracted out for a wider area as well.
If I may, I could be wrong, but I believe SUC contracts their approving officer position as well. One of the local ones do for sure, I just can't recall if it was SUC that I was talking
Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Into New Business, Finance and Admin, Report, Acting Director of Finance, Regarding Statement of Financial Information, our Sophie Report, our long-awaited Sophie Report.
Good worship. As required by the Financial Information Act, we're presenting for approval the 2013 Statement of Financial Information. The report has been prepared, as per the requirement of the Act, and the audited statements that are included in the financial information statement have been approved by council on the June 26th meeting, if I'm not mistaken. I'll gladly answer any question that council might have or from the public in regards to the report.
Counselor? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Sorry, if you're on a hard copy, it's page 116 of 130. If you're on a soft copy, it is the tangible capital assets, section six. Sorry, I don't know how far into that you are. Are you on page 116?
116, tangible. Yes.
Okay.
Page 116.
That's, I have no idea. Sorry.
Note six.
Note six.
Mm-hmm.
Can you please tell me, looking?
Page 25.
Page 25. Okay, thanks. Could you please tell me, for 2013, we had an accumulated amortization of 29 million on road infrastructure? And then road, the balance beginning of the year was 61 million. So you know, that's how much roads that's worth, and then we've got $29 million of amortization against that. Can you explain that to me? Do you know, like, I'm trying to understand, on road infrastructure, why do we have 29 million dollars of amortization?
Well, the roads are amortized every year.
So are we saying, are we saying that we're amortizing it as in that eventually we're going to need to repave it? Is that what we're saying? Or are you saying we're carrying 29 million dollars of debt?
It's a percentage of the value of the asset that is taken as depreciation every year. It's an accounting practice for all assets.
Okay. So we're saying we've got 31 million dollars of roads, or excuse me, 61 million dollars of roads, but, but the roads are 50% degraded?
That's, I don't.
Is that kind of what we're suggesting there?
As per the accounting system, yes.
Okay.
An engineering point of view of that could be different.
So that's, that is a potential long-term liability, but not a short-term actual financial liability, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a liability, sir.
All right. So I guess, looking over to our city engineer, if I may? Mayor? Is that right? We have a plan regarding that, since we were basically, we're amortizing that 50% of our roads are, are now needing work, what, and that we have that liability of 29 million outstanding. What's our long-term plan on addressing that issue?
I don't think that the amortization number has anything to do with the amount of work needed on the roads, but there's no question that we have not been doing much in the way of overlays for a while. And as directed by council, we have had an RFP out for an asset management plan to be drawn up for the roads, which includes visual inspection and testing of all of the roads in town to determine their condition and what work they need at the moment and how near they are to the end of their life. And that I have a recommendation on my desk for the firm to be selected for that, and that'll be coming to council probably in September or the August meeting, perhaps.
So is this a long-term risk that is higher than what we would see in other municipalities?
I would have to say the jury's out on that. Most municipalities would not get away with doing as little to their roads as Colwood has, and that's largely because we sit on this massive gravel base, which really helps protect our roads. And so we, if you take as the sort of judgment or indication that you're in real problems, the appearance of potholes in the roads, see very few potholes in Colwood roads. So despite the conventional wisdom that, you know, we should have repaved some of them long ago, they're still functioning perfectly well.
Thank you. And just one more question to, to our acting CFO. Under the same line, but under parks and land improvements, we've got $718,000 of amortization liability. And do you? And do you, could you explain what that is? Do you know?
Well, it's the amortization of the infrastructures in the parks.
So are we talking playground equipment? Is that what we're talking about? Or, I guess I'm just trying to understand what we're spending money on, and that's now a liability?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at here, sir.
So we think it's playground equipment?
Bridges, path, that kind of.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one note, there's a number of pathways in our parks which, like roads, would have a depreciation over time.
Anyone else? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I only have a soft copy page to go by, and it's on page 24 of 25 of the SOFI report. And my question was in regards to the, I guess that's the same page Rob was on, actually, no, makes all perfect sense to me. The totals from 2012 to 2013 are, it is somewhat less, so is that correct, that it is a declining balance based on, on the accounting version of the state of the city's assets?
Yeah, we add the issue for the year, what we purchased in terms of. We usually, we add what we build and purchase in terms of capital assets during the year, and then we subtract the depreciation for the year, so that's the variation between the both net values.
Thank you. Just seemed like we were still acquiring a lot of things, and I'm sorry, I'm just looking for my page where my other notice. I am on page 11 of 45, under the consolidated statement of operations, and it notes a loss on change in proportionate share in West Shore. And I just wondered if we should have a note explaining that change, because I know there's quite a complicated formula at West Shore Parks and Rec with regard to property values and population, and is, is that what has caused the net loss?
It's noted, ma'am, and I'll check with our auditors, and if we can put such a note in there, I agree with you that there should be, should be a bit more clear on that.
Recommendation, we need to receive the SOFI report?
Sub moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.1.2, a report from CAO in regards to the draft 2013 annual report on year ended December 31, 2013.
I am pleased to submit the City of Colwood's 2013 annual report. As you review this report, you will see that the City of Colwood is continuing to contribute to the development of a community that is economically strong, healthy, and becoming more vibrant every day. In 2013, our city was widely recognized for environmental initiatives, development potential, and community excellence. City Council has developed a very important plan that defines the mission of our local government and a vision for the future of Colwood. A core set of values also exists to guide behavior and actions concerning the management of the city. For staff and residents of the City of Colwood, these represent a promise for the future and to provide clear direction for where our city is going. To get there, council has committed to a set of priority goals such as community well-being, economic diversity, and environmental care, that guide the city's investment activities and provide the framework to strategically deliver programs and services to accommodate our continuing growth. This past year, city administration undertook a number of key initiatives in support of fulfilling these goals, some of which included service capacity review, communications plan, capital asset management planning, economic development strategy, sewage treatment, lagoon bridge and foreshore, and transportation master plan. To further these goals in 2014, it is important to continue growing the economy, enhance the quality of place for residents, focus on results, deliver on city plans, and provide proactive and pragmatic leadership. As the City of Colwood is entering a period of sustained growth, we will see our community grow from just over 16,000 to 33,000 by the year 2038. Major focus for the city is planning and managing for this growth, so that the meeting of needs of new residents and businesses will not negatively impact those who already reside in Colwood, and thus ensure that our outstanding quality of place in the city is sustainable. Part of that process is an aggressive assessment of the services we provide, our responsiveness, our communications, our business processes, our fees and charges, the way we consult with the community, and our customer service initiatives. As the community heads into 2014, I am already seeing success, and I'm proud of the work that the City of Colwood has done in my short time as city manager, and I look forward to working with council and leading staff to embrace the challenges and successes we, as we strive to make Colwood a better place to live, work, and play.
Comments from council? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. I love this annual report. It looks absolutely gorgeous, it's full of information, and huge kudos to Sandra and everybody else who was involved in putting it together, it's, it's great. I have two suggestions. One is, I had the opportunity to be in a different city the other day, and I noticed that they had their vision and their mission actually up on the wall of their meeting rooms, and I thought, that's a nice thing, because it sort of reminds you that that is your mission and vision, and it's something I'd love to, for us to consider doing as well. The other comment I had, and not necessarily something that needs to be addressed as a part of this report, but when I look through our environmental goal, I realize we don't say anything there about climate change mitigation and adaptation, yet that's sort of clearly an underpinning of quite a bit of the work that we do. So I think when we come to look at our goals and priorities again, it is something we should consider adding to the wording in there. Great job.
And Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just have a very quick comment, and I just want to commend the addition of the strategic goals and priorities, because that's a very difficult thing for us to communicate out, and the showing the percent that we're complete, how we're doing it, working on those, so I think that's great information.
Any other comments? Looking for receipt? Move receipt? Nope, excuse me.
Through you, Madam Mayor, it's required that the public be given an opportunity to comment on the annual report.
Well, we'd be happy to have that. Step right up, folks. Not getting any uptake on that, Pat. Oh, Dwayne. Anybody that would like to comment on the public, on the annual report? There, see, they, they just echo our opinion. Need a motion to receive? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving then into protective services, results of the alternative approval process for snorkel 57 replacement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is the results of the alternative approval process, snorkel 57 replacement. At the regular meeting of council held May the 12, 2014, council approved entering into the alternative approval process for the replacement of snorkel 57 by way of a five-year lease through the municipal finance authority. This is renewable for a second five-year term at a preferred rate of interest. In order to be able to enter into such a lease agreement, council was required to seek the approval of its residents through an AAP. As required by MFA in the Community Charter, Section 175, strict resident engagement guidelines were followed for the short-term lease borrowing through MFA. It was determined that 10% of the city's electorate is 1,210, and that figure was established as the minimum number of elector responses required by the deadline in order to defeat council's approval to borrow by way of a lease without the assent of the electors. Public notice of intention to borrow was published in the local newspaper consecutively May the 21st and 28th in the Goldstream Gazette. The guidelines for the AAP require that the final day for submitting petitions against borrowing be established at least 30 days after the date of the last or the second advertisement appears in the newspaper. The deadline for accepting the elector response forms was established as Monday, June 30, at 4:30 p.m., which was 32 days. As of the June 30 deadline, one alternative approval process elector response form was received by the city bearing the signatures of two registered electors, opposed to the proposed borrowing of funds to replace an aerial fire apparatus through a lease under the municipal finance authority. This result indicates that there is insufficient objection from the electors of Colwood for the city to enter into a lease agreement with the MFA for the replacement of snorkel 57. As part of the final approval, council is required to receive a report on the outcome of the alternative approval process and formally adopt the results by motion to complete the terms required by the municipal finance authority to receive consent for them to authorize the funding requested. There are no financial implications for the budget in the year of 2014. A request for proposal has been developed by staff. The bill-out time for the successful company's proposal is estimated at 14 months. It is recommended that the results of the AAP be forwarded to the communications manager so that she may provide results to the community through the city's website. It is recommended that committee recommend to council the July 2, 2014 staff report regarding the process undertaken and results of the alternative approval process for the funding model proposed to purchase a replacement for snorkel 57 by way of a lease agreement with the municipal finance authority be received for information. And that council acknowledge and accept the report that only two registered electors submitted an electoral, an elector response form opposing the funding model approved by council on May the 12, 2014, with no other forms or communication received by the city. And that staff be authorized to enter into a lease agreement with the municipal finance authority to a maximum of 1.35 million dollars for the replacement of snorkel 57 for delivery in late 2015. And that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the lease agreement.
Sub moved.
Second. Discussion, council? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee, item 7.3.1, proposal for changes to Carger Park. Counselor Day?
Thank you, just getting my, my equipment to cooperate. There was a report presented to the Parks Recreation Committee by the engineer regarding proposal from SCANA Development, the developer of Robson Place, with regard to the trees on Carger Park. In the past, the trees in the park had been topped, which has caused some unusual regrowth with several stems sprouting from each cut. The city notified the adjacent property owners by telephone call and/or hand-delivered letters advising them that this item would be discussed at the meeting, and there was quite a few people who attended. Many of the residents adjacent to this park spoke on issues that concerned them, and were supportive of revised recommendation where the city's parks foreman will work with an arborist selected by the city, and the developer would make a contribution. It was suggested by the residents that once the report was received by the city, that they would like the, to see the report brought back to the committee for discussion. The residents were pleased that the city is looking at the safety of the trees and not giving permission for the trees to be cut down. There was a great deal of concern with the precedent being set for cutting trees in parks for views. They were also concerned that if the trees were cut down, it would increase the maintenance cost of the parks, or that it would also affect the trees that are on private property. One resident spoke on the need for the city to adopt a greater notification policy covering a larger area, for example, a radius of 80 meters when sensitive items are being discussed. And I won't go on, it was a lengthy meeting, but I believe it was a good outcome. The recommendation was, and I would so move, that we recommended to council that the parks foreman work with an arborist to develop a plan for habitat, safety, and other improvements in Carger Park, that the plan be discussed with the public at an onsite meeting, and that the plan be brought back for Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee for approval, and that council offers SCANA Development the opportunity to expedite the works through a financial contribution once the plan has been developed.
Just a question, there's a second motion on here, are we dealing with all of the in what's happening?
Just thought I would stick to the one at a time, and then make the second recommendation.
Fair enough. So opening it to the council, Counselor Martin?
I'm just curious, who, who's paying for the arborists? I guess I'm just a little confused, just because of number four being in there. So is the city paying for the arborists? Or is, are we, is, will that not happen until the developer?
I believe the engineer may be able to give us a more up-to-date idea of where it's going, because of course it's voluntary for the developer to make that contribution, but we do need the advice of an arborist if we're going to do anything with those trees.
We haven't had any further discussions with the developer, because we're waiting for the, the outcome of this meeting, but I believe the intent of the motion is that the developer would pay for the arborist, but the city would actually engage the arborist and give them their terms of reference, and decide when they had done those terms of reference, and therefore where, when they should be paid.
So what if the developer doesn't want to pay the arborist? Are we paying it then?
Well, then, nothing.
Are we not doing it? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, is which, how does this, how does this motion be affected if the developer does not pay for the arborist?
Then nothing will happen.
Yep.
And I guess the, just to expand on that, the impetus for the developer to pay for the arborist is that it will, it will make their development more saleable, because it will make for a more beautiful-looking park that they're looking directly at, and if, if they choose not to, certainly we're going to eventually develop a park plan, and you know, it just might not happen in the timely way that would be more suited to the developer's needs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you, and there was a second meeting, or second, second motion from the meeting, and it is that it be recommended to council that the urban forest strategy address fines for illegal cutting of trees on public and private properties, and I would so move.
Comments? Counselor Martin?
I'm sorry, I don't understand it, so perhaps somebody could give me a little more detail on what that actually means.
There, there have been a number of cases in the past where trees in parks have been vandalized, taken down, otherwise harmed, and it's been very, very difficult to proceed with any consequence for those actions that are taken in our public park. And so, as we are, have already planned to do the urban forest strategy, we're asking that it take into consideration creating a fine for the illegal cutting of trees on public and private properties. In fact, at this meeting... vandalized, taken down, otherwise harmed. And it's been very, very difficult to proceed with any consequence for those actions that are taken in our public park. And so as we are, have already planned to do the urban forest strategy, we're asking that it take into consideration creating a fine for the illegal cutting of trees on public and private properties. In fact, at this meeting where we were discussing this, one of the residents brought forward photographs of a tree on her property being taken down via aerial truck by a developer. So there's very little that we can do about something that we feel is quite clearly wrong, or did feel at the meeting was quite clearly wrong for somebody to, you know, come in and, and take something down on your property and not have any recourse.
So, thank you. So just as a clarification, so just so that I'm clear, so if somebody comes onto my property and I'm watching them and they're cutting my tree down, I, I can't call bylaw and have them come over and stop them and then bylaw issue them a fine right now?
You, you can, I don't know about the fine part, you can certainly call them, but once the harm is done, the harm is done, and sometimes you're not quick enough.
No, and I guess I'm just trying, I just, I'm trying to understand, we don't have that in place right now, where bylaw or any of the city that has the ability to find, find a person for cutting my tree down.
I think, I think that would fall under the law of trespass and you would call the RCMP.
Okay, but, but the city can't find them right now? So that, like, I'm just trying to understand the motion, with the motion suggesting that the urban forest strategy addressed this fine issue. So right now, we have nothing on the books that allows a, a fine.
If I could, no, we don't, then the, the big issue is that there's very little recourse that's been mentioned for people cutting trees down on their own property in contravention of current bylaws. Certainly, there would be a consideration of a range of tools for enforcement, not just fines in that urban forestry strategy.
Do we have, like, normally, if we're going to start charging, we see some sort of a spreadsheet on what that is supposed to look like. Is that already addressed in the strategy paper?
The strategy has not been developed yet. It's, it's in our plans to work on, so we're just pointing out that this is an issue we would like that policy to address.
Through the chair, just because of the wording, you know, we're going to be doing enforcement of illegal tree cutting on private lands when, to me, this is a common law issue that should be enforced through the RCMP, and it's an offense of trespass. So just, if you could elaborate on why we need to be enforcing this.
Well, for the one part, the case that I know best was at Lookout Lake, where two trees were ringed. The RCMP were involved insufficient, there was nothing that we could do. In the case of Carger Park, where the trees were topped, that was also without the city's permission. And again, the legal recourse was insufficient through the RCMP and others. So all I can tell you is that it hasn't worked. I've seen two very clear-cut occasions where it hasn't worked. So if we want to protect our parks, we need some mechanism that's, that's going to be functional.
Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too am a little fuzzy about the, the public aspect, or the, the private aspect. The public aspect, I totally get, and I, I'm aware of the history, because I was around when that whole issue about Carger Park came. But the, the private property, I'm, I'm not sure that it's something that we necessarily want to get involved in. I mean, if your neighbor's cutting down your tree, then, you know, that's an issue between the neighbor, much like a, you know, any other dispute you might have with your neighbor. And I'm not sure that the city necessarily wants to get mucked up with that, at least currently. So I guess I'm just trying to rationalize that particular aspect of it, because I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the, the private property part of it.
Councilor Collington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The wording is quite deliberate. It's not prescriptive. It says the urban forest strategy address. It doesn't say how the urban forest strategy is going to address that issue. And in my mind, it does need to look at the private property piece as well, because we also have circumstances where we have properties that are under development, where, you know, for example, we've got restrictions on, excuse me, tree cutting before a certain time if that were to take place in advance of that. We do need something on our own books that can address those kind of issues. So I think the, for me, the wording of this is general enough that it's saying it is something we need to look at. It doesn't necessarily say exactly how we're going to look at it. I think that's obviously something staff will be doing as they go forward.
Councilor Lukens?
Thank you, Your Worship. It was also discussed at PLU's last meeting during the OCP review in the urban containment boundary and people not being able to cut trees down there, the same as somebody else who's outside of the containment boundary. There's fines associated for them to do it in the urban containment boundary and not, and so there's two standards. So I think there's a number of different things that need to be considered here. And I don't know that this quite does it for me. I don't know what I'm going to get back and when that's going to happen.
I just want to point out that this is really just recommending that we look at these areas as we're developing the policy. You're going to completely have control on this coming back, and you're going to look at how it's, what we come up with, or what staff comes up with in terms of mechanisms to address this, and if you're not satisfied with them, we can address it then.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you, through the chair, I have to go. I, I guess, tagging on to what Councilor Lukens has said, it's, it's, I don't have an understanding unless I've missed it in here somewhere, about when we expect the urban forest strategy to be done. Do we have a due date or an expected due date on this work?
Actually, just discussing this at the request of the CEO last week with management, it is on council's second-tier strategic priorities. We had it budgeted for 2014. We are looking at starting this project the winter of 2014, and we're actually looking at a really interesting partnership with the engineering department to coordinate this work with their stormwater management plan. And we're toying with the idea of urban ecosystems sort of approach, so that we're tying the trees with the water and the soil to have a holistic approach.
Well, isn't that, we're just looking at, at an inclusion of an area to be considering in the urban forest strategy that's yet a work in progress. I think I can, you know, carry on to support the recommendation that's here, to see what that looks like, and then, and then have more question. It's a little bit fuzzy for me at this point, if we were deciding on making that a fine and what that would be or whatever, but I think, I'm happy to look at it in a bigger context. Councilor Lukens?
Can I just confirm, then, what you're saying is that you're asking for fines to be part of the urban forest strategy? Is that the simple part of it? Is that what you're asking? And that's all you're asking for? It's not like fines are going to be starting now, and it'll be a build-out of the urban forest strategy, the community will be involved in the process, you know, et cetera? Because I think, you know, this, as we know, has been a sensitive topic in this community for quite some time, and we need to get it right if we're going to do it.
Any other comments? Call the question then on this one, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Moving forward then into planning and land use, official community plan, rezoning amendment application for thirty-four seventy-six Wishart Road.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I was thinking, as we got into this, I neglected, although I sent you an email, to ask if we could adjust the agenda when we got to the bylaws to move eight dot nine to eight point one, so that they didn't have to sit through all the bylaws. But anyways, here we are, and you'll have to excuse me, my notes didn't take in my soft copy, so I'm going to be reading verbatim for some of it. The applicant is requesting to amend the OCP designation from hillside shoreline to neighborhood center, and the zoning from rural one A one zone to a new comprehensive development zone in order to permit a mixed-use residential commercial development consisting of small lots, single-family lots, townhomes, an apartment building, plus an area designated for residential and commercial use. The proposed development would consist of one hundred and forty-five residential units and approximately fourteen hundred meters squared of commercial space, funding towards various amenities contributions, including a new crosswalk at Veterans Memorial Parkway, and provide between forty-two percent and forty-five percent of the total site as protected open space, depending on which proposed option is selected, and we'll talk about that in a bit. The forty-five percent contribution is associated with the option, which includes an apartment building at the center of the site, and the forty-two percent contribution is associated with the option that forgoes the central apartment building in exchange for additional single-family dwellings. The applicant is also offering to dedicate the open space areas lying adjacent to Havenwood Park as city park, and the portion of the property lying adjacent to VMP be designated for up to thirty affordable housing units to be developed within partnership with a non-private housing society yet to be determined. The architect working on behalf of the developer provided a detailed PowerPoint presentation explaining that the site consists of approximately six acres in total to the east of VMP and twelve acres to the west of VMP. There's five different development zones and a trail system that will link with existing trails and facilities already in place. The architect reviewed the proposed concept plan, explaining how they positioned the twenty-four units on the site to follow the contours, and will use natural landscaping between the blocks transitioning down the hill, using boulders and natural plantings to provide screening and separation, because they wish to maintain the character of the site and maintain the natural appeal of the area as much as possible. There were many in attendance. Some spoke in support of the development, others were opposed for various reasons, as you can read in the report. I can confirm that the wetland in the headwaters of one of the channels of Victoria Week at Victoria Creek, and is one of two major environments the city has been looking at, the long-term conservation preservation since incorporation, and that it is a breeding ground for a number of small amphibians, birds, and insects that are very valuable from a habitat perspective and shouldn't be developed. And the wetland impounded waterway is located entirely on the development site, and it's not associated with the Havenwood Park wetland area, and that the stream running through the back end of the site is associated with Victoria Creek. There is a common property access leading to the bareland strata development. They intended on softening the grade of the existing trail network and redesign the route so it links to the Havenwood Park Trail. It's planned on creating another trail connecting along the west boundary to the park linking to Resolution Way, but may consider that based on the information they've heard regarding the environmental concerns, that that area of land associated with the twenty-one strata lots is approximately six acres, and the lot sizes are expected to be about four hundred meters squared. That an encroachment onto Havenwood Park to facilitate access to the western parcel has not been contemplated to date. The, the commercial portion of the development is not expected to begin until they see how the Royal Bay commercial development proceeds, proceeds, and what response they get from the first phase of their development. And that the grading is not considered severe as far as site development is concerned, and that they have reworked the plan in the lower part of the single-family units by introducing green corridors, eliminating the rock walls, and providing a two-to-one slope, that the townhouse, townhome site is a series of more level plateaus and steeper bluffs, that they plan on saving the trees along the edge of the bluff, and that they will not be blasted. That twenty-five percent of the site is public green space for parks, and the balance for private green space, that they may be the opportunity to secure a viewpoint for the benefit of the public from the high-view area. That phasing of the development will begin on the east end of the site on Wishart Road, and then decide on the next phase, once they see what the response is with respect to the market. What's expected from the applicant surrounding energy efficiency requirements, and that the lot playground, tot lot playground, will be located along Wishart Road at the end, one of the entrances, that concerns with trail and or boardwalks being constructed alongside the edge of the wetland will be addressed in an environmental report. It was brought up about the greenways. Staff has confirmed that discussions about greenways did occur with the developer, but the nineteen ninety-nine Greenways Plan was not specifically referred to in the report, offering to supply the committee a review of the plan against the proposal prior to the public hearing. And that part of the biologist's report comments on the provisions for the green space between single-family and retained area around the multifamily open space areas on site, and that the commercial component did not comply with the OCP requiring the OCP amendment, that an OCP amendment would still be needed once the current OCP review is approved. What the driver was for the increase in units was the nonprofit housing units and central apartment building caused the overall density to increase from seventy to six to one forty-five. HAT and TLC were sent a formal referral request and replied stating they are opposed to the application, but they did not elaborate any further. So that's a long-winded version of where we're at. There was further discussion among committee, and the recommendation was an ISO move, that the OCP and zoning amendment bylaws, including provisions for contributions to the community amenity fund in the amount of twenty-five hundred per dwelling unit in excess of two, a contribution to the attainable housing fund in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per dwelling unit in excess of two, and a contribution to a fund to plant replacement trees within the city in the amount of five hundred per dwelling unit in excess of two. Is that correct, Ian? Because I just, around the five hundred per dwelling unit in excess of two for the trees within the city, was that, is that correct?
That is correct, in terms of what the recommendation stated.
Yeah, okay, good enough. Okay, dwelling unit and, and contribution of thirty thousand toward a crosswalk on Veterans Park, Memorial Parkway be prepared such that if when provisions are made in a registrable development agreement for the following conditions consideration, will be given to the adoption of the amendment bylaws. I'm not going to read through each of these, there's drainage, energy efficiency, forming character, improvements, fire safety, et cetera. And then council required the applicant to submit a report from an experienced traffic engineer on the safety of the proposed access prior to first reading. Just so you know, we sitting at the council table did receive this this evening. I don't know at what point I should speak to those recommendations, but maybe I can do it after I go through this, if you don't mind. The next one, that council direct staff to prepare a bylaw to create a new reserve fund for the replanting of replacement trees and bring the bylaw forth to council. And that council direct staff to ensure that development be connected to municipal sewers through a registrable development agreement, that council direct staff to secure access to the public viewpoint area via public trail through a registrable development agreement, and that council direct staff to review the current proposal against the nineteen ninety Greenways Plan and provide the information to council prior to the public hearing.
Second.
And then, do you want me to address this after?
Now is part, and then we can.
Yeah, so as was suggested in the recommendation, that council should receive summarization of the traffic plan, and the director of engineering had an opportunity to review it, but not until Saturday, hence it came to us very late, and I know there was a very brief conversation today with the developer. The assessment by the chief, director of engineering is west access of VMP, it would operate safely at the eighty-fifth percentile actual speed of the existing traffic on VMP, although vehicles going south on VMP may have to slow down. There's a number of different things. Did the public get this, or do I need to read through it? No? Nobody's?
Just us.
Uh, just us, okay, excellent. Vegetation between the rock face and road edge to the north should be cut down to provide adequate site distance so that vehicles traveling south on VMP at the speed limit do not have to slow down. Next item, C, vehicles traveling south on VMP at the seventy-five kilometer hour, eighty-fifth percentile of speed, will have to brake for vehicles exiting the development and turning right. Acceleration lanes could be provided to solve this problem, or steps could be taken to reduce current speeds, the latter being preferred according to the consultant. A standard sign warning of the junction ahead and construction, constructing sidewalks in this area to give a more urban appearance would be appropriate. And D, currently, a left-turn lane is not required to avoid delays to traffic on VMP, but this could be required in the future. Number two, and just so you know, there's three, east access off of VMP, the site distances are more than adequate for this entrance. And B, exclusive left-turn lanes should be provided. Item number three, Wishart access, the intersection would operate safely, but vehicles traveling south on Wishart may have to brake slow behind vehicles exiting the development and turning right, and there's no exclusive lane, turn lanes that are required. So the recommendation that has, or the suggestions from the engineer, the actions that should be required of the developer are as follows. If constructing the west. If constructing the west access off of VMP, A, install standard signs for southbound traffic, warning of truck traffic during construction and later warning of the junction, and B, construct two-meter-wide sidewalks on VMP from the walkway to the parkway placed to the new crosswalk proposed over VMP and over the same length on the other side of VMP. There's three, and I'm on number two now. If constructing the east access off of VMP, construct exclusive left-turn lanes at this junction. And item number three, if constructing, constructing the Wishart access, install standard signs for southbound traffic, warning of truck traffic during construction and later warning of the junction, and B, construct one-point-eight-meter-wide sidewalks on the west side of Wishart Road from the southern boundary of the subject property to a point opposite the current end of the sidewalk on the east side. And I just want to make comment here that I have spoken to both engineering, director of engineering, and planning, and they have suggested that because this came in so late and there's really not been the opportunity to consult with the developer on this, that this portion of this document, because it was a requirement to bring forward in order to take it to first and second reading for bylaw, but that we defer for staff to consult with the developer on these issues prior to the public hearing and by bringing it back to council, say August twenty-fifth, in order to allow them to continue with the process. So, that's that. Sorry for the long wind. It's what happens when Agenda Notes eats your comments.
So you're wanting to defer this part back to staff?
So only, only the travel, or the traffic piece, I am suggesting that we defer to staff for further discussion, but the other piece, I am looking to move on, the recommendations as I laid out.
Is there any impact, staff, on splitting it like that?
No, Madam Mayor. The major consideration is that this meeting on the twenty-fifth happened before the public hearing, which needs to be scheduled such that there's adequate notification for the public.
So we wouldn't want to do it before the twenty-fifth of August anyway, so it makes sense to allow them the opportunity to work with the developer on this piece.
All right, so.
Trust me, I asked.
Yep, okay, so we'll, we'll call that on this first part then. All those in favor? Okay, I didn't see anybody moving and getting excited about this. Go ahead, Councilor Collington, jump right in there.
I would like to get excited about this. I will not be supporting this recommendation. This is a piece of property in this city that I have walked for a great number of years. It was a piece of property that was well-identified in our Greenways Plan as a very important connection. The original owner of the property, I believe, was very clear that he wanted to see this land protected in the long term. I'm very aware that Colwood is in a state right now where we have a lot of land that has been cleared, done for development. We've got a lot moving forward, and so it seems a travesty to, to clear yet another site for development when we have many other areas on our books. It is one of the few last remaining mostly natural areas that we have, and I think we need as a city to think about protecting our ecosystems, protecting our ecology. I sat on the other side of that table, this table, many years ago, and I watched a former council make some very brave decisions when Havenwood Park was up for development, and they turned the development down and took steps to, to create Havenwood Park. I think it would behoove us to, to make some similar kinds of decisions in this case. I have huge respect for the development team that put this together. They've done some great developments elsewhere in the city, but this proposal for me is too much for this site. I don't like the fact that we're going to have very significant ecological impacts. We're going to lose a major wildlife corridor as well as a trail. There was talk about the importance of the wetlands by Councilor Lukens. Of course, what happens is when you put development next door to a wetland, you've got a lot of nights. That changes the ecology of the wetland. You lose a lot of the wetland values. There is a trail connection proposed to go through. It doesn't look like one that kind of feels real friendly for, for people trying to, to move from the VMP side over to Wishart and towards our new high school. I think the, the development on the, the west side, I know that originally there was a proposal to, to take some of Havenwood Park to create the access into that, and I believe the objection from Habitat Acquisition Trust was that we cannot do that within the bounds of, of the covenant, so I believe that has actually been moved. I certainly like the idea of things like commercial, things like nonprofit housing, but it feels like an odd location for, for commercial. I'm not sure quite what's going to, to fit into there, and not the easiest access in and out. I attended the public meeting, listened very carefully to what people had to say. Certainly one of the proponents said, you know, if you, you're going to lose all of the, the trees, because if you have to remove some of them, the rest are going to turn into hazards. So I see green on the map in the development. I'm very afraid that's not what I'm going to see post-development. I could see supporting some development on this property, but the way that this is and the amount of development that's proposed, I cannot support. Thank you.
Councilor Martin, and then Councilor Day.
Thank you.
I'm going to support this so that, I guess it's more, I'm just addressing this specific issue. And that's just regarding, again, believe it or not, I want to talk finance, just a new reserve fund. We have, we seem to have enough reserve funds. We really need to create another one for trees. Can we not just put this into a, a reserve fund that we already have in place?
If I could respond to that question, the developer has actually asked that that portion of the recommendation be waived, and there's a memo in the back of the package, it's on page three thirty-one, that was prepared by the planner, that speaks to that issue. So we've actually put that forward as an item to be removed in place for there to be onsite tree planting schedule created. The discussion of creating reserve funds has come up in the past, and there is a desire to limit the number of reserve funds, but it's not necessarily the end of the world if you have a number of reserve funds, because they have to be by legislation very specifically tied to the work they're, they're meant to pay for.
Just as a clarification, you've confused me, Ian. Just from a standpoint of, so the, the motion we're looking at this evening has this reserve fund in it, but your notes have suggested that we should have it removed? So I guess which are we passing this evening? Or which are you looking to have passed this evening?
It was something that came up since the Planning and Land use Committee meeting. We put it forward to council as the developer's request. It could be something that was amended prior to first reading, which is in the agenda for later this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, what, and we talked, I talked about this with Ian, is rather than planting trees throughout the city of Colwood, that they focus on planting those trees in their development. So that's where that would go versus elsewhere in the city in a reserve fund, and we'd spend it who knows where. So that's why that ask was made. That's why I asked Ian during the recommendation, but that was the recommendation put forward, and this came up after.
Councilor Day.
Thank you. I have concerns about that recommendation because that's, it's a concern in terms of that, you know, there's been a planning and land use meeting where people were informed, and then subsequently, you know, the developer has come back and said, and by the way, we're not going to make that contribution. And I don't feel that, that trees on their site is going to be equal to what's been taken away, so that is a, a concern for me. Just from the report, I'd like to point out to you, it's on page two of eight of the report, the certified tree faller and assessor stated that he has recommended to the developer to remove the bulk of tall, mature trees on the east side and replant, because once you open up an area for development, there's danger of wind throws. Certainly, we've seen that before, and certainly some trees have withstood that, as have all of the trees on Rockwood Terrace, all of the trees in the buffer zone for Royal Bay. He also noted, and this is the very next sentence, that once the trees are removed from the side of the development, the houses to the north will get beautiful water views. So I find that very suspect when you're asking, when your developer has brought you straightforward and brought out his faller to tell you about the great views that they're going to get and why they have to take down all the trees, because they'll fall down anyways if you don't cut them down. So that I find very difficult, that it's right in the report. The other issue that I have is, and I'll take you to the spot, on page four of eight, it's a long paragraph, so it starts with the areas proposed as dedicated park, park space are not considered high-value recreation area. First of all, that they're not considered a high-value recreation area is not, I don't think that's a, an accurate description of, of the area, because a big part of the attraction of many of the remaining natural areas in South Colwood are very dependent on one another, and without the wildlife that inhabit the area, they're not nearly as attractive. When Murray's Pond was logged for Royal Bay, road construction, the very next spring going through, small owlets were visible in the trees, sitting there with their little fluffy feathers on. They're very cute. I'd never seen them before, but though, they're very important to your experience of the, of the parks that are there. And these areas, that's why in nineteen ninety-nine, through the Greenways Plan, we identified this as a very important wildlife corridor habitat area, and it was quite important, I mean, it's very important to the citizens of Colwood to have the, not just the views, views are wonderful, I like them too, but to also have a full suite of, of natural ecosystems available. Just further down in that same paragraph, it says the potential for forty-five percent of the site to be protected open space. Now my question, sorry, my note to open up, is with this high ecological value site, what percentage is protected under the riparian areas regulations? So what I'm really asking is what amount over the provincial requirement is this development actually offering to the city of Colwood?
Staff?
The riparian areas regulation states that there's a thirty-meter zone from a riparian area that is looked at within the requirements of that legislation. The biologist that's responsible for the RAR report then defines a stream site protection and enhancement area based on the fundamentals of that site. So it's a site-by-site analysis in terms of what gets protected. I would ask our planner, Mr. Vanderkamp, if he's got anything more to add in terms of what's been submitted to date. If I could indulge council, if a representative of the development team is here with that information in terms of, call upon them if, if they are available.
My name is Philip Buchanan, I'm with JD Anderson Associates. Just looking at the plan, my son.
Yep.
I would guess that twenty percent of the proposed park space would have been required by the, as riparian would require to be protected anyways, so roughly, we're saying probably twenty percent, twenty percent of the allocated park space.
It was, my understanding from reading the earlier reports, that it was about the same amount that would be required to be retained, but I could be incorrect. I, I just, I think that it's really important, and Judith made a couple of points, there's been a, a long history of, in that property. The fellow who used to live there, Jack Bennett, lived there his whole life until he had a unfortunate chimney fire, and they, his family rebuilt the property for him to return to, but he was not comfortable returning after the fire. He was always very present in the community. If you walked down the road, you would walk down and you would talk to Jack, and he permitted people to walk through his property so long as he knew what you, what you were, who you were and what you were about, and we've identified it so long ago as being an important corridor. There are trails that link up to Outlook Park, to Havenwood Park. Judith did mention the importance of a connection for students wanting to travel to the high school. There was another part in the, in the report where he talked about using, cutting down the trees and then using boulders to, and I, I just, I can't stress to you how important I feel that it is for the community to feel, and, and I appreciate that you're trying to work with the developer, and I, I would like to be able to work with the developer to provide a, a plan that, that both protects the, the view that the community has of, of the land, and also allows some development to occur. But the, the current plan and bringing it forward in the summertime, when people are very likely away on holidays, we're all about to take our break, I don't think that between now and our August meeting, that you're likely to really get people's attention in terms of what's happening with the transportation aspects of the plan, and I don't feel at all comfortable about the entrance on Wishart Road in terms of what's been brought forward here tonight. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I too will be supporting the application, and it's a, it's a tough one because it's a chunk of property that has a lot of history, and people have treated that, that property as a park, and, you know, it's similar to when we built the Veterans Memorial Parkway. People treated that area as a park, and when you go to develop it or change it, it raises people's eyebrows and, and brings out some passion. The fact is, you know, as much as we would like to develop it as a park, there's no way that we could ever hope to afford it. I mean, Havenwood Park cost us five-hundred thousand bucks a number of years ago, and that was a, that was a sweet deal for forty acres of parkland that we purchased off the provincial government at, at a preferred rate and at a payment plan that we could, we could support. This is private property, and, and while it can't be all things to all people, I think staff and the developers have, have done a, a good job in trying to minimize the impacts. Personally, me, I'm supportive of the forty-five percent ratio. I like the aspect of the, the nonprofit housing. I like the different mix of housing, from the apartments, the townhomes, the single-family dwelling. It makes neighborhoods look interesting as opposed to boring when you're looking at just one type of housing. And I, I also think that the, the apartment in, of itself is, is an amenity, you know, it gives context and contrast to the area, and, and it does up the percentage of, of green space. So we see that whole area starting to develop and change. I think it's, it's changing for, in a good way, and we see. And we see Latoria Walk as a prime example. I remember when that development came, and it's changed over a number of years, but now it's a pretty skookum area that's starting to liven up. And I think, you know, we might see the commercial area, or might wonder about the commercial area in this development, but I suspect that, given time, it will link to other areas, commercial areas, like Latoria Walk, and only enhance other developments that may be in the area. So from that perspective, I'm quite eager, actually, for this to move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Lukens?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I know that when the initial plans for this development came forward, a lot has, a lot of work has been put in by the development team and staff to get to where we are today. As Counselor Logan said, it's not going to be all things to all people. And the difficult thing is, there is a lovely path through there that I have also walked a few times. I haven't been here as long as some of you, but as Counselor Logan said, it is private land. If we want to retain that green space and the ecology that's there untouched, we can expect that a developer's going to allow us to do that for no cost. And if that's the case, we as a city need to put together a plan in order to be able to purchase lands like this if we want to be able to retain them to the status that they are and that people would like them to be. I would hope, and my expectation is, that our staff at the city and the development team will do the best possible job that they can for the benefit of the community to be able to retain some of those things. I too am excited and like the prospect of the diversification within the development that is planned. With respect to the commercial space, you know, potential opportunity for daycare, highly sought after in that area. But again, the opportunity will be there with the build-out and supply and demand, as we know, will dictate what is needed in that area. There was a resident of Latoria Walk that did speak at the PLU meeting, and did say exactly that, that the controversy over Latoria Walk being constructed is very similar to what we're experiencing here. And change is difficult, but I think in the end that Callwood will benefit, not only from a community perspective, but as a, an area that people will be able to come to to engage and have the views and participate in the community as a whole. So I will be supporting it as well.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. Through the chair, I will also be supporting this application. And one of the concerns I had initially was with respect to the sensitive ecosystems, you know, on the property. And I was, you know, I had a lot of confidence after I heard from the contractor and development team he's working with. He's very well-known to us, the city of Callwood. And I strongly, strongly encourage my colleagues around the table, is if you do continue to have concerns with respect to the sensitivity of the ecosystems there, please, please have a private conversation with him. I think it's really important that the city of Callwood continue to try to diversify its tax base. It's something that I campaigned on myself. I'm thrilled to see low-cost housing included in this project. This is something, I understand, the developer did not have to do, but really wanted to do. And so I'm just really thrilled with respect to what's been put in front of us, and I look forward to seeing the build-out.
Good.
Thank you. I too will be supporting the development as it goes forward. I'm comforted somewhat with, I mean, we've learned over time, and we've had some projects that are nuclear landscaped with the loss of trees and stuff like that, but we've got language in here that site clearing and demolition for, demolition for a facial only commence once building permits and development permits are issued for those phases. So it's not blanket, it's not going to be totally bombote and, you know, we have to sit and reconstruct or, you know, suffer through financial woes of other entities or just life itself. You know, stormwater management built right into these things. We had a real issue with the Latoria Walk up top and flooding down below on some properties because of the significant change from the forest land to a lot of hardscape in there. So these kinds of things that we're looking forward as we negotiate with the developer and make those factual parts of the plan going forward. Allow me to support this and see what else we can recover in there as well. So Counselor Lukens, you got?
Just one last comment to Counselor Day with respect to the traffic study, and I'm not suggesting that it'll go to the public during that time. What we're suggesting with respect to the deferral is that staff will work with the developer to ensure that everybody's on the same page with this, because the developer hasn't had an opportunity to see these comments, except for today in a brief conversation. So the objective was to be able to have them work together through the summer and then bring it back to council, and then be part of the public hearing, obviously, when that happens in late September, so that people are back from holidays and school, you know, getting back to school and stuff, people's lives are back into a bit of a routine. So just for clarification.
Any further comments? Called question, then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. For the deferral portion of that, do we need a motion and, so, are we going to state?
So the deferral would be, or the recommendation would be to defer the transportation study recommendations for staff and the developer to consult on these issues prior to the public hearing and bring to the August, I think it's the 25th, council meeting.
Second or for discussion?
Second.
Counselor Day? Just a question, how is the public supposed to be involved? Will they be informed in some way of the recommendations that are in this email? Ian?
This email and other documents we feel are important will be included within the public record and be made available to the public. It'll also be part of the agenda package of the August 25th meeting. Might I also suggest that the recommendation, the motion include looking at the $500 per unit tree contribution, and also reference to the Greenways Plan, which was also mentioned at the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting, that include that is to be something addressed at the August 25th meeting.
Looking for an amendment add-in to your motion?
Yeah, I will support or make the amendment to add in the $500 tree fund, or what do you want to call it? Contribution? Tree contribution?
To review the request to delete that in, to replace it with an onsite replanting scheme.
Second on that one?
Second.
Any further discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, motion carried. Moving then to 7.42, Development Variance Permit Application DVP 14-003-3123, Machosen Road.
Thank you, worship. It was explained that the application is requesting to vary Section 2.1.06 of the Land Use Bylaw 151, reducing the distance between an accessory building and a principal building from 1 meter to 0.9 meters, and Section 2.1.06-2B, to reduce the maximum allowable total combined floor area of an accessory building with a residential 1R1 zone from 60 meters squared to 85.3 meters squared, in order to facilitate the construction of a larger detached garage structure in place of an existing detached garage. There was a neighbor there that did not oppose this. It was talked about that this be something potentially that doesn't come before council going forward to streamline the processes and that sort of thing. If you go by the property, you can see it's a very large property. So that was discussed as well, as part of the conversation. But the recommendation was an ISO move that the Development Variance Permit, DVP 14-003, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the minimum allowable distance between an accessory building and a principal building pursuant to Section 2.1.06-1E of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151, from 1.0 meters to 0.9, and the maximum allowable total combined floor area of an accessory building on a lot within residential zone pursuant to Section 2.1.06-2B of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151, from 60 meters squared to 85.3 meters squared on the property described as Lot 3, Section 68, Esquimalt District Plan 9821-3123, Machosen Road.
Who?
Second.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. So just trying to understand, through planning, that if you have somebody who wants to build a secondary suite, excuse me, not a secondary suite, but like a carriage house, they're limited up to 600 or 650 square feet, I believe. And my rough calculations comes out to 80 square meters is 809 square feet. So are we not setting an interesting precedent where people will just say, well, why can't I have an 800-square-foot carriage house, then, if you're, if we're allowing somebody to have an 800-square-foot garage? Detached garage?
Steph isn't concerned about that issue, because there are carriage house scenarios that could include a garage space and a living space, and they would be considered independently. So under the current bylaws, you could have a carriage house that is above that cap, because it's limited to the area that's occupied by the people living there, as opposed to, say, a car area.
No, okay, but I guess what, the question I'm asking, for example, we'll use my house as an example, that I have a shed on it right now, which is basically 300 square feet. If I wanted to build a carriage house that would fall within the city parameters of 600 and whatever, square feet, that would put me at a disadvantage, because I'd need to remove the shed, because I would be over the amount of additional space that I'm allowed to have on it. So why would I not want to just come back to the city and say, well, why can't I put a 650-square-foot carriage house plus keep my 300-square-feet shed? Because you allowed somebody else to build an 810-square-foot garage.
Certainly, that's something council would want to consider if that hypothetical situation came before them. But the difference is that there's, in one scenario, no chance of there being a valid suite permit issued for this larger accessory building as proposed, because you simply wouldn't get an accessory dwelling unit permit for an oversized suite.
I guess I don't understand the logic behind that. I guess the, with the logic being, we'll let somebody build an oversized garage, but we won't let them build an oversized suite. That's the logic?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Day? I just wanted to point out that we have had and do have instances where proposals have come forward to have more than the permitted amount of square footage of outbuildings, but it's done on a case-by-case basis, depending on, for example, the size of the lot, or, but what we haven't done is we haven't permitted two houses, for example, to be on the same piece of property. We've said that if it's a suite in an accessory building, it has to actually be a suite, and we've limited that by size. Counselor Martin?
In just, going back to what Counselor Day has just said, then, I don't understand why, with that rationale, perhaps I could go to planning and ask, why are we allowing this? Why are we suggesting that this 800-square-foot garage is appropriate? Staff's assessment is that, given the configuration and size of the lot, it's not
going to have a negative impact on the neighboring properties.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to, the logic of why we allow some people to over, and some people don't get to, that just doesn't seem fair to me. It's, I mean, it's a matter of fairness, other than the size of the lot. I guess that's what I'm confused about. Like, if I have a quarter acre, why should I only get 600 square feet, and you have a half an acre and you get 800 square feet? That doesn't seem, that doesn't...
Size matters.
Yeah.
Counselor Lukens?
I guess, as you know, you have every opportunity, as the neighbor, to come forward and ask for a variance, and that's what's happening here. And I think what needs to be considered is, if you had the opportunity to drive by the property and look at the configuration of the layout of this property, that it would make sense to you. Not in all instances does it make sense to put this large of a structure on another lot that maybe isn't configured exactly the same. So as Counselor Day has said, and I totally agree, it needs to be on a case-by-case basis. Hopefully, that makes sense.
That makes sense, I understand.
All the question, all those in favor?
Rob just got back from holidays with Vlad, so he's a little...
Motion carries.
He's still on the bottom.
Item 7.4.3, Development Variance Permit on 3432, Resolution Way.
Thank you, your worship. This applicant is requesting to vary the Land Use Bylaw Number 151, Section 5.605-4, increasing the maximum allowable floor area ratio from 0.4 to 0.45, in order to facilitate the construction of a one-family dwelling. The applicant was in attendance and clarified that the house and suite is a modest design, but unfortunately, because of the size of the lot, it doesn't leave much to work with. Staff had stated that there had been several similar applications, noting that it's not the slope of this lot that necessitates this request for a variance, but a slightly larger house that necessitates the ask here. The recommendation was, excuse me, an ISO move that the Development Variance Permit, DVP 14004, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the maximum allowable floor area ratio pursuant to Section 5.6.054 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151, from 0.4 to 0.45, and the property described as strata lot 33, Section 63, Esquimalt District Strata Plan, VIS 7142-3432, Resolution Way.
Comments, discussion, council? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. 7.4.4, 2014 Official Community Plan Review Amendments Final Summary.
Thank you, your worship. This was the final summary of the 2014 OCP review, or Official Community Plan Review, listing revisions endorsed by members of the Planning and Land Use and Parks and Recreation Committees, and information received from attendees of the public open house. Mr. Haldenby was, who did the report and did an excellent job, added that report contains two summaries, one listing the revisions endorsed by the members, and the other one listing unresolved work plan items that did not make the final cut due to insufficient time remaining, or because of reliance on the outcomes of other strategic projects and development applications underway. It was explained that since further amendment can be expected upon completion of other strategic priority projects by the end of 2015 or early 2016, a practical alternative to extending the timeline now would be to incorporate the unresolved items at the time. The amendments that have been done to date can then be incorporated into the OCP within the timeline originally planned. There were some comments from the public with respect to some of the changes as identified. I'm not going to read through each of them. The real discussion around, at the Planning and Land Use Committee, once the report all came together, is there were a number of amendments and inclusions within the document that the committee itself did not feel comfortable endorsing or approving without further engagement of the business and the development community, because it's them and those that are going to be strictly impacted by a lot of the recommendations. So it was recommended to council, ISO move, that the processing of an OCP amendment bylaw be delayed, and the current OCP review project timeline be extended to accommodate completion of the unresolved work plan items outlined in Appendix B of the staff report dated June 27, 2014, and that the city expand upon the community involved... 27, 2014, and that the city expand upon the community involvement seeking to obtain advice about some of the economic negative or positive impacts as they relate to the suggested changes, and that consideration be given to engage members of the development and business community to ensure that they understand what is being proposed.
Second.
Counsel? Counsel Cullington?
Thank you, just a question for clarification. Under Item C, either through Counselor Lukens or staff, what's the process being looked at to engage members of the development and business community?
I can't say that we've got that far yet, but our past efforts have included targeted sessions. We find that that works best for folks in the development community that are quite busy, that need to be really targeted to be made aware of the opportunities to make comment. We would hope to combine that with a session that was open to the general public as well.
Further questions, comments?
I would just like to commend Alan for the great job that he did on this, and obviously the hours and hours of work that he put into it. It really is a great document. I just, there was so much information and so much new information added that it was a bit overwhelming, I think, for everyone, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact of the dedication and effort put into the document, so thank you.
And I will say that there's, you know, some significant parts in here that do need a more in-depth review on there, in particular, our economic development component, which is just more or less getting underway, and a number of other parts. So I'm happy to see this be worked on continually, and we can get it even better. Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried. 7.4.5, Acting Director of Planning, Proposed, Regarding Proposed Department Restructuring and Update.
Okay, I'll do this one.
Go, share. No, you do it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item puts forward a request to create a new planner position in place of the deputy director position that was vacated when I was appointed to replace Mr. Haldenby, which, as you know, it will be entering semi-retirement as of August 1, 2014. This change would allow existing staff the opportunity to grow into higher-level responsibility and would also create approximately $5,278 in annual savings to the city. The deputy position would also, would be held in abeyance until such time that council approves its reactivation when they feel it is appropriate. In the report, I also briefly outlined the planning department's plans to undertake a performance strategy to set the stage for departmental improvements and enhancements to the services we provide the community. Staff's recommendation is as follows: that council approves the creation of a second planner position and directs staff to leave the deputy director position vacant until council approves the reactivation of the deputy director position at an appropriate time in the future. Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Comments, questions from counsel? Counsel Cullington?
Just a comment that I'm very supportive of this, very sad to see Mr. Haldenby go, very happy to see Ian moving up into the position, but absolutely, you need help. There's a lot going on in this city, and you're going to be working hard for a while yet.
Anyone else? Counsel Lukens?
I'm also very supportive of this. I know it's a huge concern of the public about the number of staff that we potentially have on our roster. Planning is an area that we need to ensure is staffed appropriately, and this council, I think, is all very cognizant and aware of the importance of making sure we've got the right staff in the right place. And I am very supportive of this because I know the work that's forthcoming and that is underway already with the staff, the planning department, so thank you, and congratulations to Alan on his retirement.
Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. 7.4.6, Report Planning Technician Regarding Community Garden License to Occupy Agreement.
Staff have been working on drafting a license to occupy agreement with the help of our lawyers that we will be discussing with the, with the society, and the goal is for them to start a community garden here at City Hall. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Richard will be proud of your report. We need a recommendation, a second, please.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second conversation, Counsel Logan.
Thank you, your worship, just a quick question regarding water. Will this be on a separate water meter?
It will.
So then, what I would suggest is to make application to the Wanda Fugue Rita Water Commission for the agricultural water rate. I mention that because the commission has been very active in supporting community gardens with the agricultural rate, which is substantially cheaper.
Will do, thanks.
Counsel Cullington?
Thank you, through you, just a quick question to staff. I noticed somewhere in the agreement, it said, you know, we're, in terms of the folks who get to use it, we're colorblind and genderblind and everything else. Are we, or is this society going to give priority, first priority to Colwood residents? Do you wish to be part of the community garden? How does, how does that selection process work?
We, we decided not to include that in the, in the license to occupy, but we do have in the license a requirement for them to set garden rules, and in those garden rules, we will ask them to give priority to Colwood residents.
Counsel Day?
Thanks. I just note that there are supposed to be no significant financial implications to the city, but I'm just wondering, which I think is great, and that there's an association is wonderful, but what if the Colwood Garden Society should cease to exist? What would happen then?
The way the, the agreement is written up is that they are expected to bring the site back to its original state without having to, to seed, receive the grass. If the city chooses, we do give them the option to, to leave things behind with the expectation that there won't be any costs to the city, and then the city has the option of potentially finding another partner to work with to continue a new community garden.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I know this was on budget, we were doing, this was on one of the budget items, and I know that it was dropped because of financial priorities, and I just have to say that I'm very impressed that Richard kept this as a passion for himself and, and continued to find a way to make it work, so I congratulate planning and especially Richard for doing this. I think it's a fantastic idea. I would love to be in a position where perhaps we could get a plot for the city council so that perhaps we could do a garden and then donate all the vegetables to the local food bank. I think that would be a great opportunity for us and perhaps have the staff help us with that too, because I suck at gardening. But I think it's a fantastic idea, and I congratulate, this is a really positive community thing.
You can grow the zucchinis.
No, I can't.
Evil, has the location been identified on city land?
Yes, in the report, on the second last page, Schedule A, it shows the proposed location for the community garden, which is between the parking lot between City Hall and Public Works and the parking lot in front of City Hall. That side was chosen because it's the flattest portion and has access from, from the other parking lot.
I'm sure that Counsel Logan would agree, it would have been nice to see it up on the Wishart roadside here, so it would mitigate some of the complaints of the neighbors across on Wishart that don't like the dying trees. In any case, anyone else? Counsel Lukens?
Thank you. I'm also very happy to see this initiative stay alive, and I'm, know there's a number in the community that don't have the opportunity to have gardens and will appreciate the opportunity to participate in this. I guess, from a timing perspective, what can the public expect, and when can they expect to be able to participate, and how do they participate?
The society has drafted a plan for the, for the community garden. They are waiting for the city to, I guess, approve for the mayor and CEO to sign off on the, on the agreement. They have indicated that they would like to see this move forward as fast as possible to not lose interest from interested community members, but I, as far as where they are at with, with fundraising or anything like that, we, I don't know at this point. We had offered, sorry, we had offered for someone from the community garden to attend, but I don't think there's anybody here.
Okay, and I think the location is great. Rob will be able to grow anything because it has sun all day, and so it should be really good. And one last thing is, I was pleased to hear that there is a, a plan of recourse should there need to be, because I definitely don't want to see the taxpayers of Colwood have to incur costs to rehabilitate or anything, so I would just like to, you know, encourage that hopefully it continues for a long time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Moving into Transportation and Public Infrastructure, 7.5.1, Report Building Inspector 788, Braveheart Work Without Permit, Request for Notice on Title.
Once again, the building department, are we on here? Yes, Barry. Once again, the building department is recommending that council approve the registration of a seven, or 57, Section 57 Notice on Title of this property due to the work that was conducted without the benefit of a building permit or site inspections. We, we became aware of this, of this property having additional construction and additional suites in it due to questions presented by real estate agents that were listing the project and also that were looking to purchase the property. When we, when we checked the listing, it was quite obvious that the, that the property had been modestified significantly, and I'll just quote from the, the listing for the property briefly, it says, "A main house with an in-law suite, two additional separate suites, and an unfinished studio." So it's being advertised as essentially having four suites. The zoning for the property allows for the construction of a single secondary suite, and this far exceeds this. We made numerous attempts to contact the, the owner of the property, and as it turns out, this property was in a mortgage foreclosure. We tried contacting representatives from the banks without success. We had tried to contact the former owners, and since they, unfortunately, were not involved in that, we couldn't find anybody to allow us access into the building, so we, at this point, are relying on the pictures provided with the listing and the statements from the real estate agent indicating what work has been done without a building permit. So before I present the recommendation, I'd like to ask if there's a representative from the property here, if I may, I want to speak to.
If I may, I did hear from the former owner of the property that the, it was foreclosed on, I can't recall if it was Thursday or Friday, because we did email him the information, and he, he's, it sounds like he's moved quite often, even the land title address that we have for him, the second time we mailed out, isn't correct, so he did give us his proper address, but he does have the information. He has nothing he can really add or say or any reason to come for tonight because it was foreclosed, but he did say that he would forward all the information on to the mortgage company that now is responsible for the property, so.
So with that, I would recommend that council direct the corporate office to file a notice on land titles of this property stating that there's work conducted without the benefit of a building permit.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Counsel, conversation, Counsel Cullington?
Thank you, support the recommendation, just a question, Flo, can you help me understand? So, given all that's going on with this, the notice goes on, the bank or whoever is holding the mortgage, do they then have to sort of destroy the illegal suites before it's actually sold, or how does that work?
Well, somebody along the line would have to take this building and bring it into building code compliance and into compliance with the Land Use Bylaw, or if they do have an option of possibly applying for rezoning of the property to legitimize what's here. What this notice is doing is putting a potential purchaser notice that there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done to this property in order to bring it into compliance with the city's bylaws.
If I might add too, the really important thing too, is that any potential buyer, this notice would have to be disclosed to them, so if you recall, a few months ago, we had a lady who purchased a property, there was no notice on title, she was unaware of it, and now she's left following legal suit to try to recover her costs to bring the house into compliance.
Do you know when the house is built? It says 1920 in, in the listing.
Your worship, it appears to be off that vintage, it's, it's no spring chicken at all, and it appears to be one of the original houses on, on the properties in the area.
1920?
I, I would not be surprised. It's, it looks like it's had a lot of additions and work done to it over the years, and it appears that, you know, for the most part, it went, flew under the radar.
We have a recommendation before, is anyone, anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried?
Now, if I may, Madam Mayor, just as an update, we had another property that we had filed notice on title on, and a prospective purchaser came along, he, he chatted with us, he knew what work had to be done, he's purchased the property, and now he has applied for a building permit to bring the home into compliance. So this, filing a notice on title does have positive effects.
Thank you. Second item on Public Infrastructure Committee, Residential Gate Access to Properties Backing On to Wishart Place, Item 7.5.2.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this one and the two items that follow, technical glitches and staff work overload, we didn't have the, the minutes from the meeting, or draft minutes from the meeting that would normally be there, so apologies to members of the public and to, to council for that. I would ask council's indulgence to move forward on all three items. I'm hoping you all had an opportunity to look at the information in the TPI report, and I will do my best to, to give a flavor of, of some of the conversation that happened at the, the committee meeting, and with the third one on sewers, I will slightly modify the, the recommendation in recommendation, in recognition of the fact that you didn't get to see that, that full information. So the first one is the residential gate backing on to, or the properties that back on to, to Wishart Place. This is a, an issue many of you are probably familiar with, the area backs on to Sumar Park, there's a, a road right-of-way that's also well-used as a, as a cycling and walking path, but the properties that back on to that have historically had access to that to do things like draining out septic fields and removing trees and so forth. Originally, that was done at no cost, but since the Traffic and Highway Bylaw passed a few years ago, we have been requiring residents to obtain a right-of-way permit, and they have to pay $150 each time to access their property through the path. There were a number of requests over the last little while for that, and then for that kind of access, and a request that we make it a simpler process and a less expensive process for people to be able to, to take advantage of, of that access. It's an administrative process, it's costly for the folks involved. So we did have one of the residents who has used this on a, a number of occasions, and he was suggesting conversations that we provide a key to those residents that... was suggesting conversations that we provide a key to those residents that there'd be some kind of deposit paid for it and that we recognize that the folks using that should be taking full responsibility and liability for any damage caused. So committee discussed and agreed with the staff recommendation. It was recommended by committee and I so move that staff prepare a procedure or policy for requests to access the gates by the residents that have properties backing onto the gated portion of Wishart Place only, in which the resident would sign a form acknowledging responsibility for any damages to city property and pay a small deposit which would be refunded when the key is returned.
Second.
Conversation discussion? Counsel Lugans?
Just a question. Pay a small deposit, what does that mean? Finance will want to know.
I'm assuming that will happen when we actually have that procedure of policy. Mr. Baxter, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, those details will be in the policy and that'll come back for approval.
Counsel Day?
Thank you. There was some discussion, there's actually two gates and whether both gates would be used or one. So I just wanted to clarify that the recommendation is for only to be able to use the one gate because the other gate is almost a park trail.
I think the recommendation was for both gates. Just the one? Okay, thank you. My apologies.
Just, I believe there was one resident who was there who was saying that that would be problematic for them. So I think what's written in front of us is for one gate only.
My recollection is that we had discussed both gates because different people access different, through different gates. So can we ask staff to look at that as a part of the policy? Michael?
Technically, I think there's actually three gates they give because that piece of road right-of-way has two Wishart ends and a Carandale middle and there's three gates. And what was said in the meeting was that they would be given access to whichever gate they could best access their property from, which seems logical.
I think there's the two gates and then the road barriers that access off of the Wishart Place and I don't think it's actually a gate.
No, maybe not. Maybe it's barriers.
Yes. My recollection at committee is that we were discussing both gates.
Yeah, I think that's just what the residents would be looking for and I don't know from the end of Sumar, which is the other side of that.
I don't think there's a road access off of Sumar. There's certainly a trail, but it's not accessible by vehicle.
Yeah, just, I think we need to take them into account. And maybe when we do the policy, have the addresses listed of who's attached to which gate.
Are they common locks for the gates or are they, each one's different?
We would make them a special lock so that when we hand out the key, it doesn't give them access to all of our other gates. So there would be one key for the two gates.
Any further conversation?
So I would move an amendment then because it needs to say two gates. To access the gate, so access the two gates. And I guess, I'm sorry.
Might I suggest we say a gate because if you say the two gates, it sounds like we're giving them the permission to use both gates at the same time. Yeah, the gate sounds like there's only one.
One of the gates?
Whereas a gate means one of two.
Okay, let me rephrase it then. We'll say, my amendment would be then that prepare a policy for requests to access a gate and in brackets, whichever gate is closest to their Wishart Place address.
I think we need to, we should leave it to staff to decide which gate is most appropriate because there are topographical problems back there.
Fine, I'm good with that. A gate.
I will second your amendment if you want to do it formally. Otherwise, we'll take it as a.
Any vandalism on those gates or in that property area?
I don't think we've had any recently. There used to be a lot, but it's been good recently.
I just know I have property that I am controlled with by another gate and it's taken me nine years to get a key to access my property. And finally, I have one and the property, the surrounding property owner that controls that gate said that they, it's a significant cost for those locks and keys and maintenance and that sort of thing on there. So I hope that we're erring in our favor of small deposits. That's all.
Anybody else? Counsel Lugans?
Just based on that, just let's make sure we know what the costs to replace those are so we know what kind of a deposit to get.
Anyways, called question? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Are you going to go access that gate?
7.5.3 Kelly Road Project Options for Design and Construction Recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was a report from our deputy, the city engineer through the transportation master plan. He's been working with the team to do some quite interesting designs along Kelly Road, really looking at a couple of different questions at committee. One, looking at the possibility of putting sewer along Kelly Road and in accordance with the sewer master plan, the way it would normally work is you'd sort of have part of the road that would drain towards Suk Road and part of the road that would drain towards VMP and then round to David Cameron. But a possibility of a temporary solution where you could put sewer along the whole of Kelly Road, but a temporary pump station that would pump it back towards VMP in a way that would make sense in the short term. And the other part of the planning, looking at sort of what's happening on the surface. So bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, bus areas and a number of different design improvements through there. I'm just intrigued.
We're just having a little technical problems here with microphones and so I'm just not sure.
Is that better? No? Ooh, yes.
We're getting a bit of feedback. We're just not sure. I don't see a volume thing.
So I'll stand further back. Is that better? Is that any better?
Still better?
Was it? It's just a lot of hot air from this end.
It's cold air.
Yeah, it is cold air. Okay, can I go back to Kelly Road?
Yes, sorry.
That was weird. I was just watching all this kind of, anyway. So one of the perhaps more controversial aspects of this proposal was a possibility of closing off AD Road where it comes up against Kelly Road, putting in some pretty greenery, having a bike lane going through, but actually blocking that access to cars. So there were a number of comments, a lot of people there at the meeting, number of comments supportive of what was going on, a number of folks with concerns or ideas or suggestions, people asking about what would happen to the on-street parking, where would those folks go, especially for businesses, what would happen to parking for the Home Williams Park? The suggestion being that if AD Road were to be closed, that that would actually push onto AD Road itself. So a number of ideas coming forward and so committee looked at this and suggested that the best thing to happen was this for this to go back to a public meeting, possibly in or around. Kelly Road really gives the residents an opportunity to have a good chew over ideas and to kind of talk one-on-one and think about what some of the pros and cons of the various opportunities might be. That then would give staff an opportunity to think about those further, look at the detailed designs and costs involved in that and then bring that back to committee and council for some further direction. So it was recommended by committee and I so move that staff be directed to hold a public meeting in the Kelly Road neighborhood in the summer of 2014 to allow all members of the public to provide comments on the proposed project and bring back the public comments to committee for consideration with the detailed design and costs.
Second.
Conversation discussion? Counsel Lugans?
Thank you. I just wonder about the timing, summer of 2014, because so many people are going to be away and so just the timing of having that, is that what is expected or is that just a?
It is one of the things that was raised. I think originally the talk was around having it in July, I think the more generic wording of summer sort of allowed a little bit more time for it to happen. And the other piece that we talked about is, and this really applies whenever you do it, there's always going to be somebody who can't make the meeting. So we also discussed in some way having this information up online so that people had an opportunity to sort of put their comments in through that way as well. So summer might flex into the beginning part of September, but I think staff have to work with what's reasonable, recognizing that whenever you do it, there's always going to be people who miss.
And I appreciate that. I think we should always need to remember that. It's never a good time for everybody, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Worship. Just a quick comment as a result of the discussion about sewers. We were approached by a real estate agent and some prospective purchasers of properties along that corridor. So it really gives us the opportunity to see the possibilities and for planning to get the heads up that there's some interest to recharge that corridor and perhaps get an idea of what we want that corridor to look like as we see more development proposals come in, similar to what has happened in other areas. So heads up.
Staff?
Further to that, and this is actually something that just came to my attention today, speaking to a property owner that is putting together a land assembly on Kelly Road and working through them in terms of what densities they need to see a development come to fruition. And relating that to what's in the official plan currently, council may wish to consider directing staff to look at what's in the official plan, part and parcel with this road improvement to see whether we can improve the plan to assist with appropriate infill.
I think that's a fabulous idea and I'd certainly be willing to make that amendment to include those provisions. You worship?
Just wondering whether Counselor Logan would want to do that as part of this recommendation or make a separate recommendation?
Whatever is more appropriate. Okay, so it can be separate.
Anyone else on initial recommendation? Seeing none, called question? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Counsel Logan?
Motion number two. So moved.
Any further conversation? Called question? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.5.4?
That would be the sewage one. Always our favorite topic. So this report to TPI was really in two parts. One was sort of an update on various aspects of where we're at on sewers writ large and then the second part, which the recommendation stems from, is really about the kind of the move forward piece and putting our team in place. And when we get to the recommendation, I would like to make a slightly different recommendation and I did put a written copy in front of everybody. So it's this little kind of half-piece of paper that's sitting there. In view of the time, I will not go into the long everything that we're doing on sewers, but everybody is aware that, you know, we had a public open house that was, I think, quite well-attended and generally so support, although people obviously are concerned about, you know, how much is this going to cost, which is a very reasonable question. One of the things that has happened already is that we've had somebody looking quite carefully at Docside Green and how that has been working because obviously it keeps, you know, people keep coming back to this as the example of a good small footprint wastewater treatment plant. So we needed to have that kind of in-depth look around, you know, is it working well? We keep hearing from the CRD that there have been sort of issues of non-compliance and we wanted to kind of more fully understand what those were. What the report is coming back and saying, and I think the report is going to be up on our website soon? Okay. Okay. If it's not there already, it should be there very soon, but certainly it came back and said really the issues are incredibly minor and some of them are because the way the operational certificate is written, it's actually impossible for them to comply with in the first place. So, you know, some of those challenges are a good learning experience for us in terms of making sure that that operational certificate gets written right when we get there. There was a bit of a discussion on the visit to Seashell and the mayor has already mentioned there is a presentation tomorrow night. Encourage you all to come out. The CRD project, of course, is in a state of flux. I'll just leave it at that one for the time being. Was that a comment? But the, at the same time, mayors from the so-called West Side or, you know, Langford, Colwood View Royal, Esquire Malt are having discussions about, you know, what would a West Side solution look like? The plant that Colwood is looking at fits very nicely into that broader thinking and so the work that's proposing to go ahead, getting the RFPs for environmental impact studies, for groundwater studies out the door, will be absolutely valuable whether we end up with just a Colwood piece or something that's part of a broader west shore system. So I don't think there's a need to sort of slow down and wait. We nest very nicely within whatever happens going forward. So the project advisory team is, this is sort of one of the things that we learned from the Seashell experience in terms of good process going forward, having those kind of advisors. We have been working with a team of people under the lead of Aquitex Scientific. They've been moving forward under a series of small purchase orders and the thinking is to try and formalize that and actually sort of properly get a longer-term contract in place. We're estimating that we probably need to spend in the order of a million dollars to get ourselves to that kind of full go-forward position and in our budgeting process, we've already set aside 300, up to $350,000 out of gas tax up to April next year. We've probably spent in the order of about $20,000 so far, so we're well below that. The recommendation for the Aquitex team is about $139,000. That is significantly above our procurement policy limit and therefore, you know, if we are to go forward, that's obviously a serious decision of council in terms of do we want to do sole-source something of that size. Committee recommended that we did go in that direction, but the, because you didn't have an opportunity to look at the detailed comments from the minute, the, if you look at the recommendation that came from committee, it's really around instructing staff to prepare a contract. And what I would like to recommend is that we instruct staff to prepare a draft contract for Aquitex Scientific in the amount of $139,000 with funds coming from the gas tax to be the project advisory team for the Colwood Resource Recovery Center that takes us up until the pre-registration meeting with the Ministry of Environment, subject to a couple of things. First, that all other expenditures on this project be under current city policies for procurement and the draft contract being brought to the August Council with a request to consider funding approval. So noting that direction to prepare the contract is not to be construed as direction to ways of procurement policy, that discussion would take place then at the next meeting and we have an opportunity to look at what that draft contract might look like. So I would so move.
Conversation discussion?
I'll start. I still have an issue with this being a sole-sourced contract and us not going to an RFP. I made that clear three weeks ago. This is now... I made that clear three weeks ago, this is now three weeks later and it's come forward, it's going to move forward to the next process where they're going to build out the contract for the end of August, so we're going to look at a nine-week probably period. At that point, we, in nine weeks, we could have done an RFP and been in place, and so I'm actually, I feel very uncomfortable about this. This might be the perfect firm for us, but we should have, we should have done this properly, and I don't believe doing sole-source is the way we should have gone about this, so I'm not going to support this.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, through the chair. I do have significant concerns whenever we suggest doing a sole-source contract of this magnitude. I took a look at the detailed report and in it, some of the deliverables from this project team, and although I appreciate they have specific expertise in certain areas, the project deliverables were fairly soft and very general in kind of a management coordinating sort of role, as opposed to us using their expertise. There's no real hard timelines attached to these deliverables, and again, you know, this is a significant outlay of taxpayers' dollars, and I think we deserve to provide other people an opportunity to quote on this work, because it isn't highly specialised if you take a look at those deliverables. Project management, coordination, sharing information, et cetera, et cetera, is not a highly specialised scientific area. So, I will not be supporting this, and I encourage my other councillors to take a good hard look at those deliverables.
I express some concern with respect to the fact that the report was not attached in the package earlier today, being that this is the most significant item in our community as far as concerns and how we're executing this, I believe we need to be flawless in our execution. Of any of the reports in this, in our agenda tonight, that was not the one to leave out, in my opinion, so I personally would ask that it not be supported. I also have concerns about the deliverables, but I expressed this three weeks ago as well, and that is, I don't think our director of engineering should be the project manager. There are way too many things that we need him to be focusing on, and that is something that needs to be part of what I think is the RFP, we need to have a project manager that's going to be accountable to the city, that probably would report to the director of engineering, but I think we need to start to design and develop that team, and I think that's through the RFP process, and get that independent person and team in place in order to take us to the next level and build that business case. Because at this point, while I think we're going down the right road, I have not seen the business case of the numbers, and I know it takes some time to plan that and build that out, but that's what we need to be working to, and this $140,000 needs to be part of that process.
Any further?
Is there, is there a way to get more of this information up that would provide that? I can't open up my report, otherwise I'd...
From the TPI?
Yeah, it's not open.
Okay.
In view of it not being publicised and all the rest of it?
Maybe, I guess some of the, I'm hearing a couple, I'm hearing a couple of things. I mean, I'm hearing some members of council obviously being uncomfortable with sort of sole-sourcing a contract of this size and with a strong preference for going through an RFP process, and I think that's, you know, a fundamental decision of, is that the best use of the time? And I'm not going to prejudge whether that is or not, I guess I've made where I come from clear, but I certainly respect the different viewpoints around the table. I guess the other half of that is, is there, is there additional information that could be put forward to the public, put forward to council between now and the August 25th or whenever it is, meeting that we have? And I guess I'm sort of hesitant, because I'm not sure whether that's the fundamental issue. I mean, I think there was good participation at the public meeting, people did have an opportunity to have their say, there was actually only one person who expressed concern about the sole-source, so I think it's, you know, it's council's decision, really, it's a sort of a fundamental piece around, do we want staff time to go into the sort of preparation of an RFP and do the process? Do we want to say, we think this is a particularly unique team? I'm just not sure that it's just additional information that people are looking for at this moment in time, although certainly if there is additional information wanted, and I'm sure we can ask staff to provide that and put it up on our website.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. There was also an email that I received from one of the people who had attended the public meeting, who were concerned about the idea of sole-sourcing, who after the meeting felt differently, and felt that they were confirmed that this was a small part of the overall cost, and I am, you know, I really believe in doing things by the right process, about being, I really believe in being open and transparent, I think that's my job up here, to represent the citizens. But I think if every, of every time I've seen a successful proposal come forward, it has been about finding the right people in the right place at the right time, and I do have a great deal of faith in Aquitex. I know that Aquitex was one of the major driving forces behind the water treatment system at Dockside Green, and I think that they, more than anything else, they were presenters at the Water in the City Conference back in 2006, when I was on the Water Commission and working to increase knowledge, awareness and acceptance of wastewater and greywater recycling programmes at the CRD. And, you know, a number of people in the community pushing for a greater level of understanding of what the potential for greywater recycling was at that time, all came together in the Water in the City Conference, including specialists from as far away as Australia and Great Britain, and certainly of the speakers who spoke at that three-day-long conference, Aquitex was right up there. So, they are, in my opinion, probably the right people, and time is slipping by, and I appreciate the feelings around the table in that, you know, several weeks has gone by, and perhaps we could have in that several weeks organised an RFP process, but at what cost? Because if you're going to get someone else to do the same thing, it's quite possible that they will cost more. So, I guess I'm really, there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out, one is that it's been said that Colwood is going it alone on sewage, we're certainly not. It's part of the liquid waste management plant from CRD, we're just trying to get our plant up and going, and so I would, I'd really like to see us get the right people in place to move it forward, and at $140,000 for their work, I don't think that's terribly onerous or a huge percentage of the budget.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, through the chair. By no means were my comments critical of Aquitex or its members of that team, my comments were with respect to the deliverables in this proposed contract, being soft management deliverables and not highly scientific, so I just want to reiterate that that's what my concerns are. Secondly, my concerns are with respect to the big picture, and we keep seeing the word "big picture", but I don't feel, as a member of this council, we've been provided with the big picture. We haven't been provided with clear financial statements that make an argument for or against this project in relation to the CRD, we haven't been provided with a business plan, we haven't been provided with options. Option A being a big plant out in the west shore, option B being a network of partnerships between different various municipalities. So, I feel as though, as a member of this council, elected official representing the residents in Colwood, when they come to me and ask me, when you say publicly it's a financially viable option, they come to me and ask me what that means, and I can't answer that question. Very basic questions around numbers and finances and options, and I just feel like my hands are tied behind my back because I don't have full and complete information, I don't have a full and complete understanding of the direction that we're going. I have a high-tail vision, and I'm not suggesting that we're going in the wrong way whatsoever, and I know that we're having public meetings, but I fear at those public meetings, we are not providing clear and complete business case to our residents and to the rest of the communities that surround us.
Staff?
I've been asked the question at the public meetings, how much is this going to cost? And I've given a very clear and very definitive answer, I don't know. We won't know until we do a lot of investigative work, there's nobody on earth that can tell you what this is going to cost now. So, my understanding was that I had communicated that to council on several occasions and definitely to the public. If council does not wish to proceed without knowing what the cost is, then the best plan is to stop, and the CRD will determine the cost. If we wish to know, we have to actually gather the information, and that's going to cost money to gather the information. We have an RFP going out for the environmental study to try and get a handle on whether we can do in-ground disposal or whether we need an offshore disposal site, because that is a huge cost factor, and so that would settle one of the big issues, as well as get us ready for dealing with the MOE some months from now. But there is no way to know the cost at this stage, and without the cost, you can't do a business case.
Follow-up? I appreciate your comments, and it is true that you have said to us on a number of occasions, it's impossible to know the costs. I have examples of business cases that other municipalities have used to present to their councils and to their public about what those costs are, and they are estimated costs, but the City of Edmonton just recently passed, based on a comprehensive business case, a project much, on a much larger scale than this, but exactly what we're proposing. So, I know that it's possible to pull together the numbers, I know that it's possible to get a business case done, and we're talking about $140,000 here tonight, which could be used to go towards sending out an RFP for someone to actually pull together this business case for us.
I think Michael stole some of my thunder, I think, with the big, what I don't want us to do is to be the CRD, where I keep seeing them throw out numbers that are completely unsubstantiated. So, I'm much more comfortable being honest and saying, we actually don't know what it's going to cost at this stage, and let me provide one example. So, I was sitting with the Chair of the Quarry Liquid Waste, and, you know, he keeps saying, well, sort of, how much is it going to cost, how much is it going to cost? And I said, we don't know. Here's one very good example, we know that we need to have, in the end, a system of disposal of the excess water. If we're allowed to put it to ground, which is one of the things that we're investigating, the cost is this much. If we have to build an outfall, the cost is this much. So, some of the information that we're trying to gather at this point in time is to get us to that stage where we have the information that allows us to do that business case, that get us to that point of being able to say, is this a viable way for Colwood to go or not? At the same time, what we're doing through Aquitex and others is looking at those examples of who else has done that? I mean, that's part of the whole point of the Seashell visit, because clearly, they have shown that a similar-sized community can do a similar-sized plant for a cost that is considerably less than we're looking at through the CRD option. So, those are the things that we are trying to kind of pull together, those pieces to build the business case. So, I think we, I think it's very appropriate that we don't kind of put the cart before the horse and say, well, we think it's going to cost this much, when, you know, until we've got some of the answers to those questions, we don't have that information. I did want to come back to another piece that you were talking about, which is sort of the details in the deliverables, which I think is a fair point, and what I would hope is that in the draft contract, we perhaps see more specifics under the deliverables, so I think that's a great suggestion.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, you keep talking about Seashell, and it's been mentioned a number of times, did they have a business case?
I don't know if they did, we can find that out by asking them tomorrow night, but they, as far as I know, all they really knew was that they wanted it to be noiseless, odorless and green, and they, I think concentrated on what they wanted out of it for the community, and then went out for, to RFP after an RFEOI for design-build teams to build it, and they got back a range of prices, I think they were all over 20 million, but in the end, they chose something more, not the cheapest price, but one of the more expensive prices, because it gave them what they wanted, but they never mentioned a business case, and I haven't seen one.
So, I'd be interested in knowing that, and I'm hoping to be able to attend tomorrow. Part of my reason for asking that is, we are doing these small steps to try and capture information, which to me should be part of the business case, and when they present the business case to us, all of these are part of that, and we get the cost, because I feel what's happening is, we're building this snowball, and we keep throwing money at it, and the snowball keeps building, and it's going to start to roll, and it's going to get to a point where, well, we've spent so much money now, we can't, you know, change our course, and this is the way we're going down, but it's being done in a piecemeal basis versus an overall holistic basis. And I guess my question here, and this may seem a bit redundant, but what is it going to cost us to get to the point of being able to tell us the cost? You tried saying that at 10 o'clock at night.
Any hole that you want to come up with has to be made of pieces, there are pieces of information that come together to make up the hole. Now, if you want us to put in an RFP for one contractor to do the EIS and all the other pieces as well, we can do that. That'll be a contract of probably something in the $500,000 range, I would imagine, whereas if you, if you check, for instance, this outfall piece first, that's probably the biggest unknown, and at that point, you can reconsider whether, you know, is the outfall going to be so expensive that maybe we should just back away from this and throw a lot in with the other West Side communities only. The other thing that's emerging as we go along is, is Langford going to dispose of their sewage in a Colwood plant? And if they do, that triples the size of the plant at least, and reduces our cost share to a third, and it also makes the building of an outfall a lot more cost-effective, because you're building it for a plant that's much bigger. So, there's a lot of, you know, this is a moving target right now, and there's a lot of things, we don't know what the outcome is going to be. And there's no question that whenever you're dealing with a moving target, there's risk, but then that's what the CRD project is as well, so there's risk there. If you don't do something, then by default, you're with the CRD. If you don't do something, then by default, you're with the CRD.
And just as a follow-up, I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand that there's risk associated with this, and I understand there is some groundwork associated with it as well. I guess, you know, going back to my original comments and talking about, you know, timelines, deliverables, accountability, performance indicators, what if they're not met? You know, there's just no, it seems too airy-fairy. It's not specific enough for me, a lot of these things. And, yeah, I'm becoming challenged as we work through the process, and I don't feel that engaged. I mean, I know what I hear at the meetings, and, you know, I know there's a lot going on behind the scenes, and, yeah, it's just, it's a really challenging piece to try and make sure that we're engaging, so.
I would say that, you know, I mean, even at the CRD table, they couldn't tell you the answer to the questions that you're asking here, for all of the same reasons. They've spent multi-millions of dollars to get answers leading up towards this. You know, any community with sewers is obligated to be looking at treating that sewage to a standard as set by the federal government by 2020. We are in a situation in the region here that we have access to significant grant monies that have timelines around them, and in essence, the CRD sewage treatment plan has blown up as it sits after this many years and conversations around. So we're in actually a lucky position to be part of that Core Area Liquid Waste Management Plan that we are working within to be supported by the CRD to find out what it would be, because the plan does say a West Shore plant. CRD has made it clear that it will be in Colwood. So we're trying to control where that goes. We're not, we're trying to get ahead of the ball, as opposed to Squamout, who's gone through a very extensive process and rezoning issue that has kind of thrown this all out in limbo. So, you know, I don't see anything that we're doing as being detrimental. Aquatex, I've had the pleasure of seeing their work and having conversations with them. I think they're quite capable of doing this, and I totally get it on the sole sourcing or putting out significant contracts, and I would be the first all over this. But we are under some timeline, pardon me, with the CRD to have certain information to them by the end of this year. And without us meeting some of the, meeting those objectives, they could pull the carpet out from under us, and we will be in with them like it or lump it, and you will just get a bill. And we get no input, none. You could ask a question, do the cows come home? They don't have to answer. So we're trying, I think, to at least give our community some option in here ahead of things, and it's, time is somewhat of the essence here to have this report available to us and take that step, because it is one of the hinging things. I mean, if they hold firm and say, you only have an outfall option, you know, that's a significant cost in the whole build of things. Seashelt did their plant for just under $25 million, but they have an existing outfall that they will be converting to in-ground, because they have water resource opportunities to market that to, and they'll turn it into a money-in situation instead of a pumping-out situation. Their solids and what have you have been hooked up with their First Nations, closely associated to the locale, and they are in a Class A soil-building composition with fish farm product and then the wastewater treatment biosolids and that sort of thing. So it's a tough one, folks, definitely. But, you know, I just see, we sat at CRD, and they added another $5.3 million to the project out of taxpayers' pocket directly, because they want to put oxidation in this plant. I'm sorry, that stuff should have been there right from the get-go. That shouldn't be an add-on cost with a $30 million operation cost just for oxidation. I think it can be done better, and I think that we owe it to our community, and certainly in support of development within our community, to see that we can try and keep costs minimal and controlled. And so this is one way to put us part of that. And, you know, simultaneously, it's gaining ground with the addition of the other municipalities out our way, so it makes it a fairly contiguous piece of land and pipes, if you will, between Langford, Colwood, View Royal, Squamout, and the two First Nations. So we might have a chance to get it right, folks. That's about all I can add to that. Anyone else? Call the question, then, on the recommendation that we have before us. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? I have had a request in the bylaws by Counselor Lukens, because we have certain proponents in the audience. 8.9 bylaw, is that correct, Counselor Lukens, before I make this change? Was it eight?
8.8 and 8.9.
To come to the top of the list, so we'll start with 8.8, and then go to 8.9, and then go back up to 8.1. Is that agreeable by council? Yep. And I'll need a motion to go past 10.
I have two minutes, so Gordy better make that.
No, I'm not making that motion.
I'll make a motion to go past 10 o'clock. Gordy can second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Okay, starting, folks, then, with, for those of you that are following along, 8.8, bylaw number 1547, first reading, motion, reconsistency statement, second reading, Colwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999, 2008, amendment number seven.
Move introduction?
Second. All those in favor? Oops, I have a notation from our planner here.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. I would like to just make note that the memorandum on page 331 of the agenda package actually has a proposed, the $550 per unit tree planting contribution associated with the Wishart proposal. It's actually something that has an actionable item associated with it in this memorandum, that the recommendation would be amended at this time at first reading and second reading.
We're doing 8.8 right now?
Apologies.
It's past your bedtime.
I'm looking all over here for trees, and I can't find it. So we'll go back to 8.8. We have mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 8.9, bylaw number 1548, first, or do I need to do second reading? Pardon me, on, second reading on a Colwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999.
Move introduction.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, don't we need the consistency statement before we do the next reading? Or am I losing my place?
I'm just reading this. It's got first reading, motion of consistency, statement, second read.
So that's three things. First reading.
Yep.
And then the motion that it's consistent with the five-year financial plan and any waste management plan that we have in the city of Colwood, and following that would be second reading.
Right. You guys didn't put in those words on here. But I don't have memo on mine.
Yes, you do. It's 8.7.
The memo is 8.7.
Oh, 8.7.
It should have been wrote for it as well.
Okay, so 8.7 is part of this. Sorry, maybe that's what's confusing us. So let's go to memo.
I'm sorry, what?
8.7.
8.7.
Now we're on 8.7. We had to do the first reading.
My God, it's going to late night.
It goes 8.8, 8.7, 8.8, and then 8.9.
Yep.
Gordy, did we not just pass the reading of the second?
We did.
Yes. Now we have to do the consistency statement, which is in the memo, if I can find it.
It is 8.7.
So is this where we want the amendment? Ian?
Pat's shaking her head, so I'm...
Where are you wanting us to insert that? I'm just not seeing.
This is not the amendment time. Amendment is at the second reading.
Yeah.
To read the statement. Consistency statement.
No, it's a new...
So this was before council, now first reading, consistency statement, and second reading.
Okay.
And then the waste management plan.
Where's the consistency statement?
Number two.
So it's not in here?
Yes, the same.
So is that what? You're looking for the move at the moment?
All three.
If I may, Madam Mayor, the consistency statement's not part of the bylaw. It's required by legislation.
Just to read it.
Yes.
Okay, so then I will do that, consistency statement, that council acknowledged that Colwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999, 2008, amendment number seven, comprehensive development CD-22 zone, Havenwood Heights, bylaw number 1547, 2014, currently granted first reading only, has been considered in conjunction with the city of Colwood's five-year financial plan and any waste management plan that is applicable to the city and considers them to be consistent.
So what do we see? Move, receive that?
You need to move and second that motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any comment? Question?
Do I have some?
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And that bylaw number 1547, OCP amendment, given second reading.
Move second.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? So that takes care of 8 points, or pardon me?
8.8.
Yeah, 8.7 and 8.8, and now 8.9, which is first, first second reading consideration of proposed amendment, Colwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment 141, comprehensive development CD-22 zone, Havenwood Heights, 1548.
Is this the one with the...
So is this the one? Now you want the amendment in here?
Yes.
Not yet. We can't get, got an amendment.
No, but at second. I'm just knowing that this is the one?
Yes.
I believe so, that the amendment would happen at second reading.
Yeah, okay.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
A second? Second?
Second.
Second? Good. Okay, now, let's have that amendment, please.
That's the notwithstanding section.
Oh, Ian, now where did you go?
So.
God, he's going to die.
He's got a really bad chest.
Where's the amendment, though?
It's in eight.
It's right there.
I don't see anything about trees. Oh, they were... Okay. Okay, so now we have the other one in here, which is with second reading, the amendment that bylaw number 1548 cites Colwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 141, comprehensive development CD-22 zone, Havenwood Heights, bylaw number 1548, 2014, be amended by deleting section 1027-3 subsection 1 and replacing it with, notwithstanding section 1027.2 subsection 2, subject to contributions to the community amenity fund in the amount of $2,500 per dwelling unit in excess of 2, a contribution to the attainable housing fund in the amount of $2,500 per dwelling unit in excess of 2, and a contribution of $30,000 towards a crosswalk on Veterans Memorial Parkway at the time of subdivision or building permit, the permitted density shall be as outlined in section 27.4. Next, that the development agreement for this project be revised by adding the requirement that the developer shall provide an onsite tree replanting scheme to be prepared by a qualified landscape architect, VCLSA, to the satisfaction of Director of Planning at the time of development permit. I need a mover and a second on that amendment. Questions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Now we're back to the top of the list, folks, at 8.1. Making sure there isn't anything else in there. Bylaw number 1541, first, second, and third readings on Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001, amendment number 21, LAS enlargement for 536 Mountview Avenue. First, second, and third readings?
Move introduction. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second, second.
Any conversation, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move through.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1542, first, second, and third readings, Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001, amendment number 22, LAS enlargement for Lot 1, Plan 35947, Mountview Avenue.
Second.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Keep him out.
Yeah.
He's going to disease us.
Move second. Second, second.
Conversation, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third. Second, third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1545, third reading and final reading, Colwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 140, CD-12 zone, text amendment for 571 Latoria Road.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final?
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Number 8.4, bylaw number 1531, final reading, Animal Control, bylaw number 1531, 2014.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading for MTI Information, bylaw number 1314, 2010, amendment number three.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor?
It's bylaw 1532.
1532.
We need a motion to approve the fines that are outlined in that bylaw before we do final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to, oh, okay. Motion to, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading now? Motion?
Second.
Any, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 8.6, final reading for Election and Voting Procedure, bylaw number 1546.
Move one, second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And 8.7, 8 and 9, we've done?
Move adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Motion to have a really good summer break?
Yes, motion to have a really, really good summer break, folks.